Welcome, everyone, to the City of Toronto Committee of Adjustment Virtual Hearing on June 16, 2020. Good morning, everyone. During the declared emergency in the City of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment Virtual Public Hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform and streamed on the City of Toronto's Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with the physical distancing requirements and a provincial order that limits attendance at public gatherings. This will be a virtual public hearing and participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online event that is being moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to hear or view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Panel members in attendance today include Member Amy M., who is participating remotely via WebEx, Member Gary McKay, who is here in person, Member Mohammed Said, who is here in person, and I'm Hina Kibir and I'm chairing the meeting today. Staff members in attendance today include Colin Ramdial. He is the Deputy Secretary Treasurer for the Scarborough District. We have with us Katrien Darling, Dan Antonacci, and Brian Caradonna. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting either by their computer, a phone, or tablet app, or by telephone. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members will be participating by video. All registered participants will be participating by audio only. We ask that you mute your devices until you are called on to speak. The hearing will take place at a slower pace. Each item will be stated and then a moment will be given to allow everyone time to find their place. Please write down the WebEx meeting access code and attendee ID from your WebEx meeting invitation and keep it nearby for quick reference. If you experience lag or audio issues, disconnect and call into the hearing and enter this information. We begin with acknowledging the lands we sit on today. We acknowledge the lands we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnobi, the Chipewa, the Hoodnashoni, and the Wendat Peoples, and is home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit and the Williams Treaty signed with multiple Mississaugas and Chipewa bands. In accordance with Section 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for minor variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw, permissions to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consents to create new lots. In terms of making your submissions, where an application is uncontested, the agent or the applicant will proceed with their presentation if required. The committee may ask questions or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or the agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or the agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee of the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to the proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to the notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals, either in support or opposed to the application, will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or the agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Before we proceed, I would like to have confirmation of minutes of the last meeting and would require a motion to adopt the minutes.
Yes, Madam Chair, reviewed the minutes from the last meeting and find them to be in order. So I'd ask that they be adopted.
Member McKay puts forward a motion to adopt the minutes from the last meeting. May I have a second, please?
Madam Chair, I would like to second this motion for approval of minutes.
Member Said seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. Motion carried. All members are in favor of this motion. Motion carries. Members and staff, are there any declarations of interest for the items on the agenda today? Member M., please go ahead.
I have a declaration of conflict of interest for the application that is set to be deferred today.
And that is item number five?
Item number five, yes.
All right. Thank you, Member M. So we have Member M. who has a declaration of interest on item number five. Thank you very much. There are no further declarations. Thank you. I will now ask if there are any deferral requests. Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferral? Please let us know.
Through the chair, yes, we have received a request for deferral for item five from Engineering and Construction Services. They are not in a position to issue final conditions until more information is provided by the applicant regarding servicing and transportation issues.
Thank you. This is item number five, and this is 853 to 875 Miller Avenue. We have a request for deferral from Engineering Services. Do we have the agent online for this? And I have Mr. Victor Lebreck as the agent on the application. Is Mr. Lebreck online?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Mr. Lebreck, could you speak a little louder, please?
Yes, I am online. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Speak louder.
Could you speak a bit louder, please?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, but it's a little faint.
Okay. Hold your mic up. I'll speak loud.
Okay, all right. I think it's better now. So, Mr. Lebreck, we have your item on the agenda today, and we have a request for deferral from Engineering Services. Have you received or have you heard of that deferral request? And do you have any concerns with that request from Engineering?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, and to the committee members. We did hear about the request for deferral yesterday morning. We've reviewed it, and generally, we don't have a concern for the request of the deferral. However, we do believe that we can satisfy what Engineering Services are requesting of us prior to the next meeting. And in fact, by July 2nd, as I believe, we can satisfy those. So we would respectfully request if this can be deferred one meeting cycle to July 10th.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lebreck. Members of the committee, we have a request for deferral. The applicant online has confirmed that they generally do not have a concern with the deferral request as long as we can bring it back to the next agenda. Staff, maybe a question for you. Is that something that we can commit at this time to bring it back to the next agenda?
Through the chair, yes, if the applicant is able to provide the outstanding information in a timely manner.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ramdial. So, Mr. Lebreck, you heard staff pending all of the outstanding information is provided in a timely manner?
It also provides, and it needs to be provided, the submission needs to be provided, and there needs to be sufficient time for staff to review it.
That's a good point. So in terms of providing submission materials, allowing time for staff to review the materials as well. So I would say at this point, staff will try their best to bring it to the next agenda, but again, we can't commit to it at this time. Members of the committee, are there any questions or concerns with this request? If not, may I please have a motion? Please.
Madam Chair, since the applicant has confirmed the deferral of this application, I would like to move the motion for deferral of agenda item number five.
Thank you. So we have Member Said, who puts forward a motion to defer the application as requested by Engineering Services. May I have a second, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to second that motion that we defer this apparently to the next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. McKay seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. The motion is carried, and your application, Mr. Lebreck, has been deferred until the application materials are submitted, which allows time for staff to review the materials. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the committee and city staff. Take care.
Thanks. Do we have other requests for deferral, Mr. Ramdial?
No.
Thank you. So now we will start the agenda. We will now go through the order of the agenda and start with item number one. So item number one on the application on the agenda today is 60 Wilkie Avenue. Just bear with me. This is item number one, 60 Wilkie Avenue. File numbers B 0038/19SC, A 025/19SC, and application A 025/19SC. It's an application to obtain consent to sever the property into two residential lots. We have on our list as registered participants, the agent, the interested party, and an opposition. Is Mr. Jerusik online?
I am here and present.
Thank you. Do we have Carol Blue registered as an interested party online? That's okay. Right. Do we have Carol Blue, who was registered as a participant, online? This is item one. Is Carol Blue online? I will move to Teresa Cameron. Teresa, are you online? I guess we can proceed, and after hearing the applicant, we can ask again. Perhaps it's going to take some time. Not a problem. Okay. Okay. So, Mr. Jerusik, we have your application before us. It's a consent application with some associated minor variances as well. For record, are you aware of all the conditions from engineering, standard conditions of consent as well?
We are, yes.
And urban forestry?
Yes, we are.
Do you have any questions or comments on any of those conditions?
I do not.
Okay. Members of the committee, would you like to have a presentation on this application or would you like to proceed with the questions?
Madam Chair, I think we can proceed.
So you have questions?
Well, I just wanted to confirm. There's an urban forestry condition. Has the applicant seen that? And is that suitable? Is that acceptable?
Yes, I've seen that condition, and we made my client aware of that, and we're fine with those conditions.
And there are certain engineering construction conditions that includes a corner rounding. Is that also acceptable?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's my question.
Thanks, Member McKay. Member Said, do you have any questions?
I don't have any question, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I will check with Member M. Do you have any questions?
No, I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I will call out again. We have Carol Blue registered as an interested party for this application. Ms. Carol, are you online? We have another party listed as opposition, Ms. Teresa Cameron. Are you online, Teresa?
Hello?
Is that Teresa?
Yes, it's me.
Morning, Teresa. So we're considering item number one, and we understand you would like to speak to us today. You have some concerns with this application. Please go ahead.
Yes. You say that it's minor variances, but I think they're quite major. My biggest concern, I live right beside where they're going to build. I'm on the north side. I'm concerned that the house is too close to our lot line. It's only 17 inches. It's not even a foot and a half. Why not take the tree down on the south side and move the house closer to Wilkie Avenue? The tree can be replaced and be three feet away from our lot line.
Okay. Anything else that you would like to add, Teresa?
No, I'm more concerned about being so close to our lot line.
Okay, thank you. Before you leave, members of the committee, any questions for, yes, any questions for the neighbor? I see Member M. Member M., please go ahead. Please ask your question.
I completely appreciate your concern, Ms. Teresa, and I would like to ask the applicant if they are willing to make an adjustment to shift the houses slightly towards Wilkes Avenue versus the north lot line.
The houses are fairly tight on the property in terms of shifting it. We have, we're not 17 inches. We're actually 0.62 meters away from the north property line, where the requirement by zoning is 0.9. So we are just under around 11 inches and not complying with zoning. So the zoning requirement is 0.9, and we're requesting the setback at that property line for the neighbors 0.62. The 0.45s are actually between the two houses. So we kept the tighter property lines in between our two houses that we're building, not at the north. We tried to stay further away at the 0.62 on that line there. So maybe that helps because they might be thinking that's 17 inches, but it's not. It's a little bit over 24 inches or 0.62.
So does that permit enough access? Like, is two feet enough access to go and manage the side of that new dwelling without trespassing onto her property line?
Two feet provides access points to, if you have to do anything maintenance down that side. Typically, when we design these type of houses, we actually create the lane link in between the two houses, which gives you three feet in between the houses, the new houses. And we always, this client always creates that as the pathway so not to disturb the neighbors to the south, to the north. We're just going to prepare either a gravel area there or a sodded area there. The main access to the backyard will be between the two new houses, which we have allowed for three feet there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member M. Members of the committee, any questions for Teresa at this time? Okay, thank you. Teresa, would you like to add anything more or before we proceed?
Maybe I'm reading it wrong. I understand the permitted building setback from a side lot line is 0.9 meters. The proposed building setback from the south side lot line, that's the south side. We're on the north side. And the north side says 0.45 meters, which isn't even a foot and a half. Am I misunderstanding that? We're on the north side.
I think you're correct. I'm reading that as well, that it says the south side is the 0.61. So is there, does there need to be a revision to these variances in terms of the wording, Madam Chair?
I would certainly ask that question, but I would like Teresa to complete her questions before I proceed to the agent. So we can certainly get that clarification and if a revision is required. So Teresa, we have heard your concerns. We will now move to the agent to address your questions or comments that you've just made and see how he addresses them. So, Mr. Jerusik, could you please address the concerns that have just been raised and provide clarification on the setbacks?
Yeah, this is very easy for us to clarify this. The house that is on the north side is part one in the variance list. So part one, the variance is number four, is worded the building setback from a side lot line is 0.9, the building setback of the side lot line is 0.45. It didn't distinguish north or south. But if you look at the actual site plan, the 0.45 is our south, and on the one adjacent Teresa's property is 0.62. So for some reason, the zoning examiner then worded part two, which is the south property along Wilkie, they made the distinction between the north and south. But on part one property, the 68, they didn't make that distinction. And to solidify this, to put anybody at ease, we're fine to tie the site plan as part of the application, which would tie the 0.62 on the north side of part one as well. I'm fine with that.
On part one as well?
Part one of the variances don't distinguish north and south like the variances did on part two. The zoning notice, I guess, didn't find the need to do it. So, yes, we are, I guess, part one, if we get it approved, we can technically get 0.5 on both sides based on the variance list. But I'm okay to tie the site plan to it, which would lock in the north at 0.62 for the property line on Teresa's without reworking the, without adding a variance. We can just tie the site plan.
I understand that, Mr. Jerusik. So let me confirm for the part one. It does not distinguish between the side, from a compass perspective, it just says side lot line, and the requested variance is for 0.45. Are you suggesting a revision to 0.5 or are you leaving it at 0.45?
We'll leave it at 0.45.
That's okay, okay.
We need 0.45 on the south, but we need 0.62 on the north. But since the variance covers both side lot lines as one variance.
I see.
Just so, you know, the neighbor doesn't think that we're going to now extend 0.45 on the north as per the variance, I recommend that we just tie the site plan to it, which would require me to be 0.62 on the north as well.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Jerusik. Okay, that helps. That helps. I had a question about the corner rounding. So as you understand, a corner rounding has been requested by Engineering Services. Is that affecting your lot coverage for your south property or the corner property?
It will affect it. No, we do have, we have the quarter rounding there. We have, we haven't really plotted it on. We're fine with the quarter rounding, with the corner rounding. But we haven't adjusted the numbers to account for that. I know in some instances, we've done the quarter rounding after the conveyance as part of it, and then it got dedicated to it. And then sometimes it is created with the variances. So there's the two methods. This variance came out, this request came out after the fact, so we didn't revise the variances as per that. But we can look into that.
Okay, so I just wanted to make you aware of that because I didn't see that being reflected in the variances or the drawings. So it's in your hands then. You have to make it work. Otherwise, you'll have to come back to the committee if it affects the lot frontage requirements.
Right. I can get those numbers since I'm working from my office here. I can get you those numbers in about 15 minutes if you want to defer this to later on in the meeting. I can get those numbers and we can adjust it.
Just hold. We have a comment from staff. Yes, Mr. Ramdial?
To reduce any confusion, perhaps, one thing the committee may wish to consider is rewording. Rewording the variance to provide more clarity, variance number four, to 0.5 meters for the north setback and 0.62 meters for the south setback, if the applicant is amenable to that.
Mr. Jerusik, you heard the comment from staff recommending that the setback on the north side be bumped up to 0.5, and then on the south side would be 0.61.
Which part are we discussing here?
So right now, we're taking both together, right? So just the northerly setback for the northernmost setback and then the southerly towards Wilkie.
Which part? Part two or part one?
Part one. So for part one, the variance number four would...
Part one, it would be, for part one then, the north would be 0.61 and the south would be 0.45. It would be opposite of what part two is showing.
Okay, all right. So for part one, I repeat, the northerly setback would be 0.61, and then the south setback would be 0.5, 0.45.
Correct.
Correct, okay. And then for part two?
It is as written.
It's going to be the same?
Yeah, it's as written.
Okay. All right. So going back to your lot frontage, if it may get affected as a result of the corner rounding, Mr. Jerusik is suggesting that if we allow him 10 minutes or 15 minutes, he can do some math to confirm if any variance is required. Is that something that we're open to, the idea?
My only concern is that if that one part two variance would bring it lower as opposed to my lot area would be smaller.
Yes, yes. So there's a bit of a work that needs to happen. Okay.
You should also confirm, you should also confirm the lot coverage as well because I think, I think it would impact multiple variances.
Correct. So, Mr. Jerusik, because it may involve, we may also defer it to allow you more time.
That would probably be wise because we'd probably have to, because some of the variances are going to go down, yes. And I'll follow up with Engineering as well on that.
Okay.
I'm just looking through the Engineering Services here, sorry. When I looked at the quarter rounding, I looked actually at the curbs, so I thought we had it. But then I'm trying to look at their comments here on Engineering Services here. I'm just trying to find where the quarter rounding, where the corner rounding request is on this one. Oh, five meter quarter rounding, got it. Okay, I found it here. Okay. Okay, so we, yes, I'll have to prepare that then and send that off to them. And revise. And revise this variances.
Yeah, that's what I figured out the rounding will affect. Okay, so I guess it would be, do you want to say something? Okay, so, Mr. Gerusik, staff has something to add. Please go ahead.
Through the chair. Given that the corner roundings can impact lot coverage, frontage and lot area, you may wish to consider deferring the item until we confirm.
I agree, that's what I just mentioned. I'm fine to defer it then, to resolve that issue.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Members of the committee, given the situation that there may be an impact to the variances or the application, would we consider deferring this application until the matters are sorted out and we have a cleaner application?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd move that we defer this. It would be very helpful just to get a better understanding of the setbacks. And so I would move that we defer this to a subsequent meeting. Not necessarily July 10th, but to a subsequent meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor by Member McKay to defer the application to allow time to revise the application, which may be revised as a result of the requirements from Engineering. May I have a second, please? Members say seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. All members are in favor of this motion. Motion is carried. Your application has been deferred, signed, and due, Mr. Gerusik.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm just going to take a quick...
The there? Okay. All right, so we are going to move to item number two. Item number two. Item number two is 48 Mayborn Avenue. Item two, 48 Mayborn Avenue. This is the consent application to sever the property into two residential lots. The registered participants listed on my list include the owner and we have one member of the public in opposition. May I confirm with the applicant or the owner if they are online? The name is Elias Katsis.
Yes, do you hear me?
I hear you. And you are the owner, sir?
You are the owner, sir?
No, I am the agent and I represent the owner and he is here with me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Katsis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Katsis.
We have a member registered in opposition, MK. Is the member here, online?
Is the member here, online?
Hello?
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 Yes, sir, please go ahead.
Yes, you asked, I'm here. You want me to read my letter or I'm not clear what you're looking for?
Okay, not at this point. We just wanted to confirm that you're online and you're participating at this time. I will let you know when to speak. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Elias Katsis, the agent. I believe you have a couple of speakers on or there's some... We're getting a little bit of an echo or repeat. So you may want to turn down one of your speakers.
Through the chair.
Is that better?
Anybody who's on the line right now, please turn off the microphones for all your devices, please, because it's creating an echo. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramdial. All right, so we're going to move to item number two. We are discussing 48 Mayborn Avenue, an application to consent to sever the property into two residential units. We have the agent online and we have a member from a resident who is in opposition. Members of the committee, would you like to have a presentation from the agent or would you like to ask questions?
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like a presentation.
Okay. Member M, would you have any questions or would like a presentation? Okay, I guess...
I have no questions.
Okay, so we have a request for a presentation. So, Mr. Katsis, could you please provide us with a quick brief presentation of this application?
Thank you. Do you hear me again?
Yes, we do, please go ahead.
Yes, we do, please go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, members of the committee and staff. My name is Elias Katsis. I'm representing the owner of 48 Mayborn Avenue. We are applying for consent and sever this property and to create two new homes for residential, family residences. Our property is located in Ward 20. It is designated as neighborhood under the official plan and residential RD in the city zoning bylaw. In 1996, Scarborough Council approved the clearly secondary plan that allowed density of 41 units per hectare, which recognizes 7.6 meter frontages. There are over 60 lots with frontages of 7.6 throughout the community, including on Dawn Side, Pitt, Mayborn, Westbourne and Beck's Hill. Between 2005 and 2015, there were over 26 consents granted. There are also many lots on Mayborn with frontages of less than 12 meters dating back to the establishment of the community. The closest one is 52 Mayborn, which is two lots away. We are with walking distance to many subway stops and a 15-minute walk to Victoria Park subway station. Increasing density in and around public transit is a primary policy of the official plan. We have an integral parking space, which is to be reduced by 0.07 meters to 3.13 meters. We feel this will have no impact. A normal parking space in the bylot is 2.6 meters. We are reducing the setbacks between the new homes to 0.6 meters. There are no windows or doors on these walls and they will have no impact on the existing neighbors. The remaining setbacks are to be current and unchanged. The building height requirement in our area is nine meters. We are proposing 8.23 meters in height, well within the max allowed and will be shorter than most existing buildings and new builds. Our living space is very important to people, obviously. This is where they live, kitchens or play areas and home offices. And we are asking a coverage of 41%. We came to this by narrowing the houses in between each other. You will find other projects on Dawn Side, Pitt, Westbourne, with a significant number of them with coverages over 37%. At this time, if you guys have any questions or issues, I can address them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Katsis. Members of the committee, any questions for Mr. Katsis at this time?
Madam Chair, you may wish to ask the applicant to turn off all their microphones for all their devices.
Mr. Katsis, could you please turn off all your microphones for all your devices? I think it's better now. Thank you. Are you with us, Mr. Katsis?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, members of the committee, any questions? Okay. Member M, Member M has a question.
Just to confirm, the building height requirement appears to be 0.72 meters. And you are requesting a variance for both of the parts to permit the 8.23. Just wondering where you got the nine meters from?
So, the structure of the building of 48 Mayborn is very similar, very, very similar to 46 Mayborn. The difference is the height. So if I create a pitch roof, I am allowed to go nine meters without any variances. If I go with a flat or specifically if my roof is less than 50% flat, I'm given a max height of 7.2. But the building structure is actually the same. So, we believe that with the flat roof design, it doesn't necessarily change the character of the building and we're asking for the height variance.
I understand that, but I can say that the requirement requires nine meters when the design, because it's a flat roof, it is 7.2 meters. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I understand that, that was not my intent. It's just the nine meters is in the area.
Is that all, Miss M? Okay, thank you. Mr. Katsis, just want to remind you, we're getting a lot of echo and repeat. So do you mind, in case you have your YouTube on, could you turn off your mic or mute it?
There's nothing on. I have no idea where this is coming from, sorry.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, we'll check out at our end as well. But when you're not speaking, it's best to mute. It's fixed now, okay. Staff advises needs fixed, so hopefully it'll be fine. All right, so moving on. So, Member M, your question has been answered. No further questions from the members. I will move on to the resident who has joined us, MK Stige, and would like to open the floor for him to ask any questions or share his concerns with us.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Yeah, I have concerns with the specific details of this application as well as what I'll call the pattern of what's going on in this neighborhood. Let's start with this specific property. This is a three-story house. That's out of keeping with the character of this neighborhood completely, all right? When you take the three-story house and then you take the eve setback, which is only 0.14 meters, you're going to end up with a huge shadow on the north side. It's like, the house is literally five inches. The eve is five inches from the property line. It's gone up. It's now a three-story house for a very significant part of the year. There's no light going into the property next to it at all. The garden is useless, all right? So what I call the sunlight effect of people being able to enjoy their yards has completely been destroyed. So that's the first point I want to highlight. These homes are creating, you know, with the coverage that you've got, going from 33 to 41%, and going up to three stories and the other, what I call variations. In the aggregate, you've got a real density problem. I've watched this neighborhood and all, you know, Mr. Katsis, whoever, has referred to various other subdivisions. But what is happening here is the whole neighborhood is getting overloaded. It's getting overloaded. The roads are getting backed up. The driveways, there's cars on the road. Like, it's just destroying the neighborhood. If you were to survey, like, when 46 Mayborn was done, people were opposed. I think the council didn't want to approve it. Essentially on the same arguments, it went to the municipal board and the municipal board overruled it. And you have several neighbors, you know, I don't want to bring their names into it because I've discussed this with them beforehand. They've all said they don't want this to proceed. But they have given up opposing it because every time they oppose it, it goes through the municipal board or the committee of adjustment overrules them. And they're just getting tired, they're getting worn out.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Stige, if I can just interrupt. So we have your detailed comments on file and committee members have read through those comments. My question to you right now would be, are there any... So as you understand, there are two applications that we have before us. One is a consent application and the other is a minor variance application. So are your concerns related to the consent application, the severance of the lots? Or do you have any specific concerns with the minor variance? I do understand your concerns.
Both. One leads to the other. I mean, you're trying to deal with them as two separate issues, but they're intertwined.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I mean, you can't separate one from the other. I mean, if you don't, you know, if you don't allow the variances, the incentive for the whole division is gone. Because it's fundamentally an economic argument. You know, you're trying to deal with it on an engineering basis, but it's fundamentally an economic argument.
I appreciate that, okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. Before I proceed to the members, is there anything else that you would like to add?
Yes, I think you should really take a pause here. I, you know, as I say, I've got a fair bit of history in this neighborhood. And the whole neighborhood is what I, you know, my words, being destroyed. Others will view it differently. But it's from what used to be a residential neighborhood, it's now, in some parts, is turning into a, well, what we'll call it, rentals and nothing around the rentals. But it's the density is going way up, all right? And that density is changing the character of the neighborhood now. The gentleman, Mr. Katsis, said, you know, that's a part of the plan. But, you know, no one asked the people who live here whether they wanted that. And now what's happening is I see them ripping up the streets because you're overloading the sewers. You know, the snowplows are having all kinds of trouble because of the traffic. The homes that are remaining are getting squatted on by, we'll call them investors, who are going to continue the pattern. They're running them into the ground. They're, you know, not meeting the building codes, your inspectors won't come. It's all in my letter, so I don't think I want to repeat my letter.
Okay.
But I think you really should pause and take a real hard look at what you're doing. Because the older residents here are basically giving up because it strikes us that the, you know, the process is either broken or the people that are making the decisions really don't care. That's where it gets down to. And, you know, that's why I stay on it, so.
Okay, I appreciate that. We respect your comments and thank you very much for taking the time to speak with us today. Members of the committee, we have Mr. Stige. You've heard the comments and the concerns. Any questions? And I see Member M raising her hand. So, Member M, please go ahead and ask your questions.
Good morning, sir. While I completely appreciate your frustration and your concern, it is to say that neighborhoods are, we're not static in time and there are some mild intensification and infill that is going to occur as neighborhoods evolve. And I know that you said that it wasn't something that was canvassed to to the existing residents, but it is a policy. And when I've taken a look at the surrounding areas, what is being proposed are lot sizes that are generally around the neighborhood. And I appreciate your frustration, but it is a trend that is happening in the city of Toronto. There is a major issue with, like, with housing and needing to supply a variety of...
Let me comment on that, if I may. A decision that might have been marginal or done on an exception basis 10 years ago then gets used as a precedent for the next decision and the next decision and the next decision. And what in effect is happening is the neighborhood is dying a death of a thousand cuts because no one's coming out and just saying, hey, this whole neighborhood should just be, you know, this way instead of that way. You're leaning on, I'm not talking to you personally, but what's happening is applications are leaning on precedent. And if the basis of the original precedent was ill-advised or poorly formed or poorly formulated, that should not be the reason that, oh, let's continue with these purely poorly formulated precedents. Precedent decisions.
Sir, I'm not actually speaking from a precedence. I'm speaking at looking at the... I'm not, I'm not actually speaking from a precedence, I'm speaking at looking at the neighborhood in its entirety. So even from the image that's on the screen right now, not talking about forty-six to the south. I'm just talking about in general, I do see a very eclectic mix of different lot sizes and patterns. I'm not talking about a specific example, I'm just talking about throughout the whole neighborhood. Which could have happened over a variety of many different years. But despite the nature, I'm just saying that there is, there is the intention of very mild infill throughout stable neighborhoods in order to to provide for additional housing that is required within the city.
Let, let me just sort of comment on that. I've been in this house, this house has been in my family and I've lived in it since nineteen fifty-six. So there is no one, I, I don't think there's anyone in this neighborhood that has a better understanding of what was, what is, and what's changed. And while you may be looking at pictures and drawings and, you know, I'm not clear what you're looking at. I can, I can tell you, it wasn't always that way. Typical frontage, typical frontage in this area used to be around forty-five to fifty feet. There may have been the odd exception. The typical house with one or two exceptions was one story. Now we're looking at three sto, you know, like I understand the city evolves, you know, the needs evolve. But I, I think you've gone too far the other way in a very serious, to a very serious degree. If I were going to go across the road over into East York. Less than a quarter mile. You might see one or two rare exceptions where this kind of densification goes on. All right? But that, that would, that would be it. You wouldn't, you wouldn't see what's happening here in that, in that clearly neighborhood at all. And so what I think you've got is through a combination of precedent, I'll call it real estate investors, other economic forces. You know, you've gone down this path and I think it's, you're finding yourself, I'm not talking about you personally, but you, the, the system's finding itself hard to retrench and fix it. And I think it should be fixed.
If I may just jump in, I think we're, we're digressing from the, the, the application itself. The points that are being discussed here are, are sort of beyond the scope of this exercise. Kind of goes into other neighborhoods as well, but let's focus on these applications. So we heard it very clearly that we, there are significant concerns with this application. As it relates to change in character of the neighborhood. Intensification is, is a concern here and lots of other things that we've heard and read through the comments. Are there any further questions or comments for Mr. Stige from any members here? Okay, thank you very much. We will now request Mr. Katz to please come forward and address the concerns and comments that have just raised by Mr. Stige at this time. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I, I also read his letter and I'm going to try my best to address his concerns. First off, we are not rezoning, as he mentioned in his letter. The zoning is RD, residential detached. And we're going to keep it residential detached, that's what we're proposing. His concern about three stories, this, this house is, is a two-story. It's not a three and it has not been reviewed as a three by city staff. I understand, looking from the facade, you see, and it looks, but we are mandated from the city to have a garage at ground level. So that gives the appearance of three stories. That is something that we have to, we cannot deviate from that, that's what the city is asking from us. So we have a basement, just like every other house, we have a first floor and a second floor. And I just wanted to mention that. We, this house is also for a single-family dwelling, it is not a multi-family. So no two families should be living in this and we're not intending it for two families to be living in. In his letter, he also mentioned about the trees and landscaping, we're providing all necessary landscape area. We're not asking to reduce landscaping. And if any tree needs to be cut, there's a process for dealing with trees. And every single time you cut a tree, a new tree is planted, I'm just addressing his letter. And the, you know. You know, the, I, I don't know what else to say. In nineteen fifty-six, you know, the community was very different. But things are changing and I, I don't know how I could address that for him.
Thank you, Mr. Katz.
Thank you, Mr. Katz.
Members of committee, any questions for Mr. Katz, please? Miss, uh, Member Said has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you both the applicant and the Mr. Stige. Your concerns were heard by the committee loud and clear. Yes, I will get back to Katz and my questions are, there were two concerns raised by the, by Mr. Stige. I would appreciate if you can address them very briefly. It's, it's not over the rezoning and the height he was concerned about. He also pointed out that this development is not fitting it into the characteristic of the street or the culture of the street, because Stige has been living there for many years, more than fifty years. So tell me about that, how this development is fitting into the characteristic of the street? He also talked about the density, yes, your, your coverage is more than eight percent. There is over-coverage of eight percent of this development. So could you briefly touch on these two points, please?
Yes, for the coverage, we are in line with some other developments, specifically on the street. There are other developments on other streets which are also asked for coverage, really too many to, to bring up. But our coverage of forty-one is, is actually, you could find that twenty-eight Mayborn. And at the end of the day. You know, living space is very important and especially now that more people will be and are working from home. It's, it's really a necessity when you're living in the, in the city to have as much living space as possible. Regarding the character. Again, I'm going to go back, when he, in nineteen fifty-six, there were, there was all bungalows. And you will not be able to find two-story, two-stories are very prominent throughout the neighborhood right now. And you will find two-stories. And actually, throughout the neighborhood, the flat roof design, the flat roof has become very prominent in the last about two, three years, specifically in our neighborhood. You will find that up Westbourne and on May, on Beck's Hill. So this is a trend that has a little late to tell you that to come to this community, other communities, it's very prominent. But that's a trend moving forward. Again, what we're trying to do with this house is provide multi elements to tie in every single type of character. There's stucco, there is a siding, there is siding, there is brick. And we feel that's a good transition moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Katz. No further questions? Okay, Mr. Katz, you're aware of the conditions of consent? Urban forestry conditions? Have you had a chance to review those conditions?
Yes, we're, we're fine with all that.
Okay, all right. If there are no further questions or comments from the committee members, I would like to take this matter into committee. And then make a decision on it. So members of the committee. Any comments? Amongst members? None at this time? If there are no comments at this time, may I please have a motion on this application?
Madam Chair?
All right, go ahead, Member M.
I put forward a motion subject to the standard conditions of consent, the conditions of urban forestry. Were there engineering conditions? Sorry, I had missed that.
There weren't any engineering conditions.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry. There were engineering conditions, let me just check, we have a memo, but there are no conditions.
Okay, perfect. So, uh, subject to the urban forestry conditions and the standard conditions of consent, I put for a motion for approval.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve this application, subject to conditions of urban forestry and standard conditions of consent. And we have staff who wants to say something.
Through the chair. You all, you also may want to wish to consider the community planning condition. For permeable.
My apologies. I did not say that condition.
Thank you, thank you, staff, for advising that. We have a report from community planning suggesting a condition for permeable favors. Mr. Katz, is you're aware of that condition?
Uh, we are okay with committee, committee planning conditions.
Okay, thank you. Member M.
So I'll, I'll revise my, I'll revise my. I, I put forward a motion of approval, subject to the standard conditions of consent. The conditions of urban forestry, as well as the conditions of community planning.
Thank you, may I have a second, please? Member Said seconds the motion.
Madam Chair, I will second the motion for approval, subject to the condition of community planning and urban forestry.
All in favor of this motion? Member M is in favor, Member Said is in favor, all opposed. Member McKay is in opposition to this motion. So motion carries, the application has been approved, subject to conditions of urban forestry, standard conditions of consent and community planning. Thank you. That brings us to the end of item number two. We now move to item number three, Nine Linton Avenue. Sorry, my bad, is it? It's correct, okay, it is. Item number three, Nine Linton Avenue. We have registered participants, the applicant and the owner. John Carlos Salfidis, are you, are you online? Okay, thank you very much. So we have the applicant and the owner online. Members of the committee, would you like to have any, a presentation on this application? Or would you want, would you have any questions at this time? Okay, so Member Said has a question. Please go ahead.
Madam Chair, I, I just want the owner to further elaborate just on one aspect of the development, which is about the front yard landscaping. And I understand the owner is taking like twenty percent extra of that. And then the, the other aspect is the front yard soft landscaping. Apparently, it's looked like there is a contradiction, like you are taking twenty percent extra on the front yard landscaping. And then the requirement of seventy-five percent soft landscaping and meeting fifty percent requirement of that. So could you please, John, could you please elaborate on that?
Yes, I'd be delighted to. Good morning, everyone, a virtual and a real good morning. Thank you for your, thank you for your time. The, the, with respect to the parking pad, the provision is two point nine meters. We reduced the width of the parking pad and in fact are asking for a variance to have more soft landscaping. And that was one of the issues. This is exactly the same provision as number five Linton and seven Linton. So we want to match the width of that driveway to enable more of a soft landscaping area. And in fact, the land, the driveway itself, or the parking pad itself, would be of permeable members.
Thank you, John. Any further questions? Member Said? No?
Thank you, John. No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Member M, any questions for the, for, for John at this time? Okay, Member Gary? Okay. John, you're aware of the conditions of consent? And there are urban forestry conditions as well as community planning condition? Are you aware of those conditions, sir? Do you have any comments or concerns with those?
No, they're, they're straightforward and, and they're appropriate.
Thank you very much. If there are no further questions, and I don't see there is any registered participant in opposition or in support on this application. And we didn't receive any additional materials as well. Any, any written concerns or comments? On that note, if there are no further questions, comments, may I have a motion on this application, please?
Madam Chair, I would move that this application be approved.
Subject to?
Sub, of course, subject to, to the urban forestry conditions. Planning condition relating to permeable parking spaces.
Okay, and I just wanted to check, there are no conditions from engineering?
I'm just checking that too.
Standard conditions of consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
So we have standard conditions of consent, conditions from urban forestry and community planning. So we have a motion on the floor by Member Gear, Member McKay to approve the application, subject to conditions of standard consent, urban forestry and community planning. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Member M seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. Motion carries, all members have unanimously voted on this application, your application has been approved. We have a comment from staff, sir.
This is relating to the item two. I made an error, actually, there was, there was no community planning conditions on item two. So you may wish to reopen that.
Okay, thank you, all right. So let, let us get through with item three first. So for item number three, this, this is Nine Linton Avenue. The application has been approved, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
No problem, thank you. Now we're going to go back to item number two. We made an error with a with a condition from community planning, and there was no condition from community planning, but we had it included in our decision. I don't, I don't know if Mr. Katz is still online with us, he, they've left. All right, so staff, how do you recommend, do we open it, open the application and grieve us at the decision or? Okay, all right. Okay, so amend, amend. Okay, so we are going to amend the decision that we took on item number two, as it relates to adding a condition from community planning. There was no condition from community planning, so we need to amend our decision. So may I have a mover to amend the decision for item number two, to remove the condition from community planning?
I move that, a motion, please.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to amend the decision on item two, to remove the, the condition of community planning, have a second.
I would second that, Madam Chair.
We have a second, all in favor of this motion, motion carries. The item number two has been amended, the decision on item number two has been amended to remove the condition of community planning. Thank you, thank you. We now move to item number four. Item number four is Thirty-One Westbourne Avenue. It is a consent application to sever the property into two residential lots, to create two lots. This application was approved by the Ontario Municipal Board in twenty sixteen. The certificate was issued, but unfortunately was not registered. And which caused the consent to lapse. Do we have the agent here for item number four?
Yes, Peter Gerusik again from Arc Design Group.
Thank you, Mr. Gerusik, so we have the agent here for item four. Members of the committee, do we have any questions for Mr. Gerusik? Yes, we have a question, go ahead, Mr. Said.
If the owner or the agent is aware of the urban forestry conditions there?
The revised ones, the we didn't think there would be conditions, because the house is built, we actually sold them. It was only upon selling it that they realized that they never got the pins. So we already had forestry done, the houses are built, we're not even touching anything else on the property. So we've built it, we've have occupancy permits, we just can't close on the houses because of this technicality. So after this gets approved, there's nothing to do on the property, like, they're, they're move-in ready.
But Mr. Gerusik, we have a memo from urban forestry and they have specified conditions. There are, there's one condition, actually, they're saying two conditions. It's payment in lieu of planting a one-street tree.
We would have paid when we got the first severance, though, that's, that's the I think that's, we, we already paid that tree, because this, this variance came out on the first time we did this.
Can you confirm that?
I can, and if he has to pay for another tree, we have no issue with that. I guess if you maintain, if you keep this condition, it's fine, because chances are it's already fulfilled ahead of time, so.
Okay, all right, I think that makes sense. If we keep the condition as is, and if urban forestry is satisfied, it's great. it's great, if you have to pay, then, and if you have to fulfill the condition, then you fulfill the condition, okay. There are no additional conditions? Okay, if there are no further questions for Mr. Gerusik, then may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I put forward a motion for approval, subject to the urban forestry condition.
My question to staff, would, would the standard conditions still be applicable that are listed? Okay, so there would be standard conditions of consent as well?
Okay, as well as the standard conditions of consent.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor by member M, recommending approval, subject to standard conditions of consent and urban forestry. Have a second or please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll second that motion.
Alright, and we have Mr. McKay seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. Motion is carried, Mr. Gerusik, your application has been approved, subject to conditions.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Item number five was deferred. We move to item number six, item number six is one thirty-one Chine Drive. This is an application to construct a new two-story, purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling, and we have before us five variances requested for this application. In terms of the participation today, we have Mr. Faisal Ahmed, he is the agent or the owner. Do we have Mr. Faisal Ahmed online with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you very much. Members of the committee, would you like to have a presentation for Mr. Faisal? Or would, do you have any questions for Mr. Faisal? Member M, you have a question, please go ahead.
Sir, are you aware that there is a recommendation from engineering for a deferral of this application as there are required technical materials that have yet to be submitted and reviewed?
Member M, I think this, we're dealing with item six, are you sure you're looking at item six?
Are we not dealing with, uh, one thirty-one Chine?
Yeah, we. Yeah, we are dealing with one thirty-one, but we don't see any memo from engineering.
Oh, I apologize, I have a note here recommends deferral, subject to engineering material.
That is number five.
Sorry, my apologies.
No problem.
You scared me.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay, alright, so we do not have any memo from any department at this time. We have the application before us, requesting for five variances. Committee members, any questions for, for Faisal Ahmed? I see none. I'll give you a moment to look at.
Maybe I, just to the applicant, I'd just like to ask a question about the height. If you just go over that, I, I see that the permitted height, you're putting in a flat roof, a permitted height of seven point two meters, and you're asking for a height of nine point two five meters. Could you elaborate on that, the reasons for that particular height?
It just, it came up just because.
So Faisal, so there's a question for, if you can elaborate on the, the request for the height variance?
Yes, I'm saying that, came, first, this came for design purpose. Owner, they really want.
We're getting an interruption, we, we can't hear you well.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay. Better?
Yes, this is better, please go ahead.
Okay, sorry with that. Yeah, sorry, I mean, mainly the height came up from the design, and the requirements from the owner, they wanted a little bit higher ceiling side, higher floor, like clearance. So that's the main reason. And, yeah.
So what you're saying is that the basement is adding to the height? Sorry.
Not the basement, overall, like the, the floor height. Overall, the floor height, floor height is adding the total.
Oh, okay, ceiling height, okay, okay, the ceiling height is, it's a taller, so how, how tall is your, is your ceiling height? Eleven feet, twelve, I can't read. Twelve feet, okay.
Yes.
So it's twelve feet in height, so that's cumulatively adding to the height.
Twelve, yes.
Okay, and it is a flat roof, correct?
Yeah, it's not completely flat, it's semi-flat.
Yes.
You see the percentage.
Okay.
A little bit more.
Okay, but it has been determined to be a flat roof as per the zoning review, so the maximum, yeah, it, it's seven point two, and the proposed is nine point two. Any further?
I don't see any objector listed.
Okay, yeah, we do not have any letters of opposition or support on this application for record. Other members, any questions? Member M, please go ahead, you have a question.
Has, has your, has your client talked to the, the neighbor to the south? And do they, are they aware of, of your application and the request to increase the height?
I'm sure there, everybody's there and that, yeah, because, so they have received letter, TT.
Okay, but there hasn't been specific discussions with your neighbors?
I have to ask them, they're here, I can ask. And you.
I, I, you're really breaking up, I'm having a trouble.
Oh, sorry, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure they have, because with the, but the owner is here, I can ask, give me five seconds, I can get that, right?
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah, sure, please go ahead, confirm with your owner.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yes, I mean, they discuss, I mean, they know the neighbor very well, so this.
The neighbor is aware of the application? Okay, thank you, no further comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Faisal, member M, member Said has a question.
Actually, I have a comment, thank you, Faisal, for, yeah, this point was very pertinent that regarding the height, from seven point two to nine point two five meter, which is two meter extra. So if you have consulted the neighbors, and luckily, I don't see there is any opposition there. Madam Chair, if there are no privacy issues and there is no neighbor conflict on this height, I am, I'm comfortable with approval of this proposal.
So, so you, you're moving to approve the application?
Yes, I would like to move the motion for approval of this application, subject to the urban forestry conditions.
Okay, and Faisal Ahmed, are you aware of the conditions from urban forestry?
Yes, I'm aware of that.
And you have no concerns with the, with the conditions?
No, we're fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor by member Said to approve the application, subject to conditions of urban forestry, may I have a second or please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll second.
Okay, so member McKay seconds the motion to approve the application, subject to conditions of urban forestry, all in favor of this motion. Motion is carried, your application has been approved, subject to conditions of urban forestry, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you very much.
Alright. We will move to item number seven, item number seven, the address is one thirty-four Lawson Road. And this is an application seeking relief from the zoning bylaw to construct a one-story addition and a duck at the rear of the existing dwelling. And we have, in the list of registered participants, we have Drew Adams as the applicant and the agent, and we have the owner in support of this application, Mr. Aldo Udovichik. My apologies if I pronounce it incorrectly. So, members of the committee, so Mr. Drew Adams, are you online with us?
Yes, I am, hi.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. So we have the agent online with us, Mr. Adams. Members of the committee, are there any questions for the applicant or the agent? Or would you like to have a presentation? Okay, I see no questions. Just for record, we have a few letters of support on file. We also received a planning rationale letter that was prepared by Mr. Adams, that we have on file and reviewed it. If there are no further questions or comments, and also, there are conditions of urban forestry? Item seven, there are conditions of urban forestry?
I don't believe so.
It's in the summary table. No conditions? Okay, so if, so staff has confirmed there are no conditions of urban forestry on this one. Having said that, if there are no further questions or comments, can I please have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, then I would, I would move that we move forward and that we approve this particular application.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the application, and there are no conditions. May I have a second or please? Member M seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. Motion is carried, all members have unanimously approved the application, thank you.
Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you. Moving to item number eight, item number eight is, the address is sixty-three Mandar Lee Drive. It is a minor variance application, and the purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story rear addition with a second story addition to the existing single-story dwelling. On the list of registered participants, we have Tim and Karen Doring, who are the owners, and we have, yep, just the owner for this application. Tim and Karen, are you online with us?
Yes, we're here.
Thank you, Tim, thank you, Karen. So we have the owners online with us, members of the committee, do you have any questions for the owner? There are no questions for you, Karen, at this time. This is sixty-three Mandar Lee Drive. We have, for record, we have received one letter of objection. There are two letters of support from the applicant and the neighbor, and I believe there's been a settlement between the applicant and the neighbor with respect to the concerns that were raised by the neighbor. And Karen, I believe you had submitted a letter to our attention dated June fourteenth, and you had included some conditions that you would like to include, or if the committee chooses to, to approve the application, correct?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
Okay. Members of the committee, any questions for Karen at this time? So this is the response letter that we have on file. Sorry? Oh, Amy has a question? Amy, you have a question?
It's more of a comment, and I would like to just say thank you for working with your neighbor to try to adjust those concerns. We really like to see the neighborhood working together. So I, I'm very supportive of the proposed mitigation measures to this stormwater management issues. And I mean, if, if no other committee members have further questions, I'm prepared to put forward a motion.
We have a question, member Said has a question. Go ahead, member.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just wanted to have further understanding on one of, one of the proposed settlement, thank you very much, Tim and Karen. You have worked with the neighbors, and one of the proposed settlement is a dry well can be installed to further assist drainage. So could you just further elaborate on that, what kind of well it is and how it is going to resolve the issue of drainage?
Absolutely, so, so what we did when we received the letter of objection, we wanted to be proactive, so we actually reached out to our architect as well as our contractor, just to get some, you know, more information on what we could do to mitigate all of the drainage. So one thing that they suggested, and we're happy to go forward with it, is installing a dry well at the back of the property. And essentially, what that will do is it's the runoff from the water from the roof and the eaves, eaves trough will all go into there, and it'll help for the water to, you know, go into the soil and not be going to the front of the house.
So it's like, is it like a swale of some sort?
It is, basically what it is, is you dig out a circle and you put a bunch of rocks as well as some draping, so that the water, the seepage, will seep right into the ground. Basically, our contractor had said that it wasn't a problem at all, and that he would put it in the back.
Okay, so some sort of a drainage facility, drainage facility, like a channel or, or some, okay.
It is, yeah, and our engineer had said that, you know, based on the letter that we received from Annette, who is our neighbor, that would be more than enough to mitigate, or well, I mean, certainly offset. If not, he said probably in the end, our drainage will actually be better than it is now, even with the additional coverage.
Okay, thank you very much, Karen, any further questions?
Karen, are you aware of the forestry conditions?
Yes, we, yeah, we're aware of them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Member McKay?
Yes, Madam Chair, yeah, as the drainage issue has been addressed, I think that was the key one in this particular application. I would move that we approve the application, subject to the urban forestry conditions.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the application, subject to conditions of urban forestry? Do we, okay, member M? You second the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a second or, member M seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. Motion is carried, Karen, your application has been approved, subject to.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, thanks a lot for participating. I will now move to item number nine, and item number nine is four Penny Tank Crescent. It is a minor variance application to allow a new sunroom to the existing single-family dwelling. And the, there are two variances that are before us. We have the agent listed as the participant on this meeting, and the name is Litian Wei. Litian, are you online with us?
Yes, I am online.
Thank you, so Litian is online with us.
Can you hear me?
Thank you. Litian, are you aware of the report from community planning and the condition that has been recommended by community planning?
Yes, we are aware of this, and our client has been noticed.
Okay, and you do not have any concerns with the, with that condition?
We are fine with the conditions.
Okay, thank you very much. Members of the committee, would you like to have a presentation on this item, or do you have any questions? We have a question, member Said, please go ahead.
Litian, just a very direct question. Apparently, you know, I have been in the street, and I was looking into the characteristic of the street. Putting the parking space in front yard, that was my, my opinion while going through the street, that this is not going to be fit in into the characteristic of the street. Because many of the houses have the sun, sunroom on the sides or at the back yards, right? If you are going to put this, how you justify that it's not going to be a precedent for the other neighborhoods in the future? And I mean, what's, what's your take on this, on this point?
Per our understanding and the visits in the last summer, that we understand this community, including our clients, that are using the existing driveway as a parking spot already, and we believe that the, our proposed addition is not a change for the local, local community characteristic change.
Does that address your concern? Question, Mr. Said?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I could not hear him loudly, maybe there was some cut off or?
Okay, Mr. Litian, my, Mr. Litian's apologies, could you be a little louder, please?
So per our understanding and site visits for last summer, we understand that this community, including our clients, are using their driveway in the front yard as parking spot already, and I, we believe that this is not a huge impact to the local community characteristics.
Thank you very much, Litian. Any further questions for Litian at this time? Member M, please go ahead.
Hi, I, I did do a street view look at, at this street. And can you confirm whether eight Penny Tank Crescent seems to have a similar condition with its carport enclosed and having the parking partially in the front? and having the parking, uh, partially in the front yard as well?
Uh, just give us a few minutes, let us check the, uh, set pictures.
Yeah, we're gonna look at a satellite view.
I'm just trying to understand whether, uh, this is in fact like a, a new form within, within the street, or, or this is something that does already exist on the street.
So our proposed structure is a addition, is actually a roof enclosure for the existing carport.
No, I understand that. My question to you just builds on Member Said's question. And I'm just wondering, has, is there other examples within this neighborhood of, of other people enclosing the, the carport? Because I, I wanna understand if you're introducing a new characteristic to the neighborhood. The only thing that I saw was potentially eight Penny Tang, but it was hard for me to, uh, see for sure, uh, from street view. But I just wanna understand if, if, from your experience, um, being the applicant, if you've taken a look to see whether there is existing characteristics within the surrounding community where they have enclosed the carport?
Uh, we believe there, is there are a couple existing, uh, existing enclosure, enclosure, uh, parking port in the, uh, carport in there. Surrounding area.
Okay, so you can confirm that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No further questions? If there are no further questions, um, may please have a motion?
Madam Chair, before putting the motion, um, uh, it's again, uh, I'm getting back to my point that, um, uh, setting up a new characteristic for the street, and I don't want to set a precedent for the future, uh, such kind of applications coming on. So I am not, uh, comfortable moving a motion for approval of the, uh, for this application because of that reason.
So when you say it's precedent setting, are you, um, referring to the location of the part? Ju- just, uh, hold on, Litian, just bear with us. We're in committee now, we are discussing it. Uh, when you, when you talk about precedent setting, are you talking about, um, location of the parking in the front yard? Or are you talking about addition of a sunroom to the building at the front?
Addition of the sunroom to the front, and keeping the parking a little bit side or taking, um, bringing it to the front yard. Which actually I don't see in the street at the moment. But if this is the case, and if the committee is going to approve that, I am very much afraid that in future, uh, this will be taken as a precedent.
Okay. Any further comments?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, I just wasn't, uh, totally sure or clear of the point about the, uh, the sunroom. Uh, is it going to be lost totally to, um, in other words, uh, part of the carport can't be used, is that right? Or, alright, so we're to enclose it, and then it would, uh, move it to the front yard, which normally is not, not allowed. Yeah, alright. Then I think I'm of the same, uh, mind of, as Mr. Said on this, uh, on this issue.
Okay. Member M, you had a comment?
I, I do feel that, uh, it isn't, I mean, I, 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 I'm on the fence here, because while I see maybe one example of a partial enclosure, um, I don't see a full enclosure, but at the same time, um, you know, he is just, he is already parking his car in the driveway. So I don't see that being a major difference. It just means that one of the parking locations will not be covered anymore. Um, so I'm a bit on the fence. I mean, there, we don't have any objections from anybody. Um, and we have approved in the past, um, you know, enclosures of, of carports, but I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not fully sure whether, um, we're saying that he is basically recommending refusal. It, can we confirm, is that, is that the direction that Member Said and Member Gary are, are going?
So we, we understand that, um, there's a staff report from community planning, and they do not necessarily have a concern with this, uh, application. However, they did recommend, um, tying the drawings to the approval, should the committee approve it. But if you review the comments, community planning staff notes that it's kind of similar to the design to other dwellings in the neighborhood?
Oh, yes, right.
Okay, so, okay, I understand. So, um, but my question is more to Member Said and Member Gary. I wasn't fully clear as to your comments. Were your comments saying, Member Said, that you do not feel that it's within the characteristics, even though, um, community planning has noted that there are, uh, are dwellings of similar characteristics? Can you just confirm, Member Said? And maybe it's just I'm not hearing properly through the webex.
Yes, the, uh, community planning recommendation, I mean, they don't have any observation of that. Um, I was simply talking about the characteristics of the street. That is, that is, uh, showing a different picture. Apparently, if you go through the street, and, uh, of course, I'm not talking about the technical designing of each and every unit there. For example, you are mentioning like eight Penny Tang Crescent, there may be. Uh, but generally speaking, um, it's my opinion that it's not fitting in into the characteristic of the street. And, uh, I don't want to set a precedent for the future applications in this regard.
Okay, so then I think we're gonna be, um, I guess, in opposition with each other, because I support staff's comments in staff's recommendation, well, not recommendations, but staff's comments stating that staff note that carports similar in design to the subject dwelling are, uh, distinctive characteristic of the neighborhood. So I believe that staff is saying that it is, it is something that exists in the neighborhood.
It is, it is a prevalent character in that neighborhood. So I also, if I can, um, speak to this, uh, application, I do not necessarily have any concerns. It is, um, a unique neighborhood, and modest additions like this, um, I, I term them as very, very gentle intensification of, uh, of the built form. So I personally do not have a concern with the addition that is being recommended. And, um, parking in the front yard on driveways is prevalent in pretty much all neighborhoods. We have a comment from staff? We have lost the applicant. Sure. We have lost the applicant, we'll give a minute to reconnect.
If I can make a comment in the meanwhile, uh, Mr. Said, I'm just really quoting from the end of the planning report, and I hadn't seen this, but said, yep, community planning staff note that carports similar in design to the subject dwelling are distinctive characteristic of the neighborhood. Staff also note that the proposed sunroom will be built within the existing carport and only take up a part of the length of the carport. That's a question that I had. Um, so, um, yeah, that's a, it's interesting comments, and, and really are in favor of, um, allowing it to go forward.
Correct. Do we have the applicant back on? I mean, at this point, actually, actually, at this point, we're in committee anyways, so we can proceed with making a motion. We weren't having a discussion anyways. Okay, so given that we are in committee anyways, and there was no further discussion with the applicant, and we understand that we've lost the applicant online, um, may I please have a motion on this application? Member M, please, go ahead.
I put forward a motion of approvals. Uh, was there any conditions? Let me just-
Yes, the community planning conditions that it be tied, uh, to the plans.
To the drawings. Um, subject to the community planning conditions, I put forward a motion for approval.
Okay, have a second, please?
Alright, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll second that approval.
So Member McKay seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. All opposed. Member Said opposes the motion, motion is carried, the application has been approved, subject to conditions of, um, of community planning report. Thank you. We move to item number ten. Item number ten is eighty-three Euclid Avenue. Eighty-three Euclid Avenue, item number ten, this is a minor variance application to construct a new two-story, single-family residential dwelling, and that the existing dwelling would be demolished. And what we have before us are two minor variances, um, for this application. Uh, on the registered list of participants, we have Mr. Yasu Somalingam, who is the agent on the application. Do you, do we have Yasu online with us, please?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Yasu. Members of the committee, any, would you like to have a presentation from the agent, or do you have any questions for the agent? Okay, we do not have any questions for Mr. Somalingam at this time. I just wanna double-check if there were any conditions. So, there are conditions, okay. So, Mr. Yasu, you are aware of the conditions of urban forestry?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And you have any concerns with those comments or conditions?
No, we are okay with the conditions.
Okay, so, uh, Mrs. Somalingam has no concerns with the comments or conditions in Urban Forestry's memo. Uh, members of the committee, if there are no questions, could I please have a motion? Alright.
Chair, I will move the motion for approval of this application, item number ten, subject to the condition of urban forestry.
Thank you. Member Said puts forward a motion for approval, subject to condition, second, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll second that, that, that motion, sorry.
Member McKay seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. Motion carries. Mr. Somalingam, your application has been approved, subject to conditions of urban forestry. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I will go to committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to item number eleven. Item number eleven is sixty-eight Sunny Point Crescent. We have a staff report, we have letters of opposition on this application. Uh, we have, um, on the list of participants, we have the owner and several members of the community in opposition. Uh, with respect to the owner or the agent, who do we have online, um, for item number-
The agents online here. My name is Peter Jerusik from Arc Design Group, again.
Thank you, Mr. Jerusik. So we have the agent for this item online with us. And, uh, I just wanna confirm, we have, uh, members of, uh, or the residents who are listed. We have Susanna Chiung. Are you online with us, Susanna?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Wendy Hooker, are you online with us? Wendy Hooker. Okay. Paul Steinberg, are you online with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Grace Trento-Doo, are you online with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Anne and Roger Inkpen, are you online with us? Anne and Roger Inkpen. Okay, Ross Webster, are you online with us? Ross Webster.
Yes, I am here.
Thank you, Ross.
Ross Webster, do-
Thank you, we will check back-
Is it possible to? Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
Yes, um, I was wondering if we could, uh, let you know the order in which, uh, we would like to speak?
Sure. So the order of this agenda, uh, the application would be, you would give an opportunity to the applicant to present his application. The members of the committee may have questions for the applicant. Once we have dealt with the applicant, we will then, um, get back to the, uh, the members who are in attendance today. Um, the residents who are here to express the concerns, and then I will go in the order, or if you have a specific order, you can let me know. And then we will go back to the applicant again to rebut those concerns or comments that were raised. Okay?
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you, no problem. Okay, so I'm gonna do a roll call for Wendy Hooker. Is Wendy online with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Wendy, and I'm gonna check again for Anne and Roger Inkpen. Anne and Roger. Okay, so I guess we can start, um, once we get, they're there? Okay. So Anne and Roger, if you hear us, could you please, uh, say yes? You're there? Okay, alright, we'll check back again. So, Mr. Jerusik, um, before we proceed, uh, question to the committee members, would you like to have a presentation on this item, or do you have any questions for Mr. Jerusik?
Yeah, I, we have, I'd like to have a presentation, if possible.
Alright, sure, Mr. Jerusik, go ahead. You have five minutes for your presentation, please.
Okay, um, so we have had some, uh, conversations with the neighbors, um, on, adjacent to our property, and we have come to some, uh, some, some removals of variances, um, uh, for this application. So I don't know if you wanna go through that now, or, um, it's very simple here, we're, we're removing almost half the variances.
You could, uh, act, act, actually, you can let us know which ones you're removing at this time. So if you could, just for clarification, go through each one and say removed or keeping, okay?
Okay, so variance number one, uh, we've reduced the house and pushed it back. So variance number one, the proposed floor area is now three twenty point five, or point eight times the lot area.
Could you repeat that again, three twenty?
Three twenty point five, or point eight times lot area.
Okay, so that's, uh, modification to variance number one.
Correct.
Variance number two.
Removed.
Variance number two is being removed. Just bear with us. Variance number two has been removed. Variance number three.
Removed as well.
So variance number three, related to front yard setback, has been removed. Variance number four.
The proposed lot coverage is now thirty-eight point nine, as opposed to forty.
Thirty-eight, thirty-eight point nine percent. Okay, so we have a revision to variance number four from forty percent requested to forty, sorry, thirty-eight point nine percent. Variance number five.
Remains.
Five remains. Number six.
Remains.
Six remains. Number seven.
Is removed.
Seven has been removed. Number eight.
Has been removed.
Number eight has been removed. Number nine.
Has been reduced from ninety-three point two meters squared to forty-seven point four meters squared.
Forty-seven point four meters square. Okay, so item number nine has been revised. And this relates to the proposed floor area of the platform is now forty-seven point four square meters. Item number ten.
Has been removed.
Okay, so I will recap. Variance number one has been modified, so now the proposed floor area is three twenty point five square meters or point eight times the lot area. Variance number two has been removed. Variance number three has been removed. Variance number four has been modified, so now the proposed lot coverage is thirty-eight point nine percent. Variance number five remains, where- No. So variance number four, the proposed lot coverage is thirty-eight point nine percent. Variance number five remains. Variance number six remains. Variance number seven has been removed. Variance number eight has been removed. Variance number nine has been modified, so now the proposed floor area of the platform, or the third floor deck is forty-seven point four square meters. And variance number ten has been removed. Everybody got that? Okay. Has been modified to proposed forty-seven point four square meters. Forty-seven point four. Okay, so I think we have recapped all the variances. Now, members of the committee, do you have any questions for, sorry, Mr. Jerusik, is there anything else that you would like to add? Is there anything else that you would like to add?
Just as part of the presentation, if, if someone put up the site plan on, online here. Our concern, we've had extensive conversation, especially with 70 Sunny Point. Because they are on the curve of Sunny Point, we want it to be neighborly. So, we pushed the house back as far as possible, which eliminated the majority of the severance issues and whatnot, to allow them a better view, not to obstruct their view of the lake. And also, to eliminate an overlook. I don't know if you guys have the third floor plan, of the architectural plans, showing the rooftop?
Yes, we do.
Yeah. So, if you look at the third floor rooftop, that's the elevation. But if you go back one to A5, page A5, the, the set, we've eliminated that, that whole bedroom area on A, sorry, A4. My apologies, A4. A4, we've eliminated the bedroom in the back, and just minimized, we minimized the front patio, just to be at the front section. And we put a roof line to our north neighbor, so that nothing potentially can blow off the roof, because it was flat. So, we now have a roof line on half of the house. That's why the reduction of the patio is just in that front, that front left side portion. And we still maintain the elevator and the stairs. That is it. The entire back portion, the bedroom two, is now full roof. And where you have that, kind of those multiple lines, which is a pergola, that is a roof as well. We've restricted it, we've, we've minimized the outdoor patio to only that part in front of the pergola. And where that window is by the elevator, that is now the access door. And only that half section on the front is now the patio. So, we worked all the way up to the weekend to, with the neighbor, to come up with something they'd be happy with. We do have letters of support as well from neighbors. I know there's opposition as well. But in, in light of that, I know the people in opposition did not have these variances. So, we did remove the living areas of the third floor. It's only the access of the staircase to enter that patio area. That is all that we've now have there.
Do we have any revised plans to reflect this?
I do have revised plans. I can send it to Paulina, the Committee of Adjustment. I, I thought I was gonna be able to, we were working on this even on Saturday, to try to make the neighbor happy to the north of us, who's directly impacted. And so, we were doing changes up to Sunday. I, I can email it, it's not a problem, and we can reflect that. But in essence, as you can see, we've made leaps and bounds forward to eliminate the majority of the variances. And we, in essence, removed the third floor living area, just the access. We had the same issue with 46 Sunny Point, which, which was appealed to T-Lab by the, by the, by neighbors of the community. And we were successful on that one. And that was a similar issue, where we just had the access to the patio. The only difference there is the entire roof was flat. To create a little bit more of a, kind of a block for the, for the outdoor patio, and no risk that someone can build a patio in the future in the back, we've created the whole entire back as a roofline structure. I believe that some of the neighbors have shown up a picture of the neighboring houses there, the one with the third floor kind of roofline and flat patio. That's kind of, in essence, what we're looking to do, is, is the back half of the house will have a conventional roof, and only the patio is flat there. But the rest of the house will have a conventional roof on it. So, that eliminates a lot of the issues. And by removing the third floor, it reduces the floor plan, the FSI. And we shrunk the house to allow the neighbor to the north more viewing space. So, we shrunk the house by, we pushed the house back, and shrunk it by additional two feet, to allow them to have a better view. And that brought down the coverage in FSI as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jerusik.
We're all positive step forward in working with our, our direct neighbors to the north and south, to, to come up with something that will affect, that will be, you know, acceptable to the neighbors around us. And I think this is more in line with what we see in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jerusik. Unfortunately, we don't have the plans in front of us, so we can only, at this point, visualize what's going on there. We can certainly get some sense. But I guess, well, we should get going with the comments and questions. So, members of the committee, any questions for Mr. Jerusik at this time? Amy, I, I saw your hand raised. Go ahead, please.
Sure, you, Madam Chair. I think you did confirm my question about whether we have revised plans. So, I'm just wondering to staff, do we just, like, if, if when we get to the motion, do we just revise planning staff's recommendations to tie it to the revised elevations to be received? Or how, how do we do that?
So, I guess, because we haven't seen the drawings, I don't know how we can put that as a condition. At this, at this point, I'm, I would just say that we just go, it's just a number game. It's just math, at this point. We, we can't visualize it. But we can't have drawings at this time. So, it would be up to the building permit drawings, when they're received, to confirm that the numbers are accurate.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
We're, we're getting some more guidance from staff, so just bear with me. It's a number. Okay. Sure. Staff, please, please advise.
Through the chair. If the applicant has the, the plans available, can I ask that he submit them directly to the Committee of Adjustment email address? And I'll provide that to you. It's C.
Right now, I have, I have the document right in front of me.
Yeah.
You want it to the C, C of A one?
Yes, please.
Sending you those drawings right now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and we will pull it up.
And through, through the chair, if, if you can confirm, the applicant can confirm that the drawings reflect all of the changes that we have discussed today.
They do.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Jerusik, we will wait for the drawings to come in. Committee members would, should, how, how soon do you think it's gonna take? Couple of minutes? Okay.
If you'd like to move on to other ones, to allow some time, I, for the essence of time, for the whole schedule, I'm fine if you want to push it down the, the list, but it's up to you guys. I, I'll leave it up to you.
Okay, I think that's, that's a fair comment. Let's, let's move with hearing our residents, who have been waiting patiently. And then, we will, once we come back to you, we can review the plans at this time. Member Said has a question before you leave, Mr. Jerusik.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jerusik. I was just updating my number of future revised. Could you please go with me, the variance number four? You make changes in the coverage from, what was the coverage, revised coverage?
Forty, it was 40%, and we reduced it to 38.9. We shrunk the house by two feet in depth.
And is there is any change in the various number five, which is the height?
No.
There is no change in the height?
No, no, but the height, the, the 10.7 is to the peak of the roof. But the majority of the house had the flat section for the deck. So, we're still at the 7.2. I don't know what the, I don't know if it's 50% or 40% of flat roofs versus that. So, we're still requesting 10.7, either way, if it's 7.2 or 9 meter requirement. We're still requesting 10.2. But that is to only the peak of the new roof in the back, of the peaked roof part. But the majority of the house is lower, which is, I think that's, I had that number a few seconds ago, 7.2 or something, 7.8 or 7.9, which is the, the deck area.
Okay. And I can see there was, like, on the street map, there are a couple of other houses, which have, apparently, they are three-story buildings. Is this going to be the most highest building in the street, in the neighborhood?
I don't know the heights of those buildings. I wasn't privy to those elevations. I did work on 48 Sunny Point, 46 Sunny Point, which has been approved by T-Lab, following committee's approval, and then appeals by the neighbor. That one, I believe, is around 10 meters as well. And that's down the road.
But your one is 10.7 meter, right?
The peak of the roof, but the majority of the roof is still flat, which is at 8 meters.
Okay, thank you, Jerusik.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question here, just a question. I'm putting a coa.ca as an email address, and maybe I typed that in wrong or something, because it's not recognizing it.
Through, through, through the chair, the, the email address is.
@toronto.ca.
Correct.
I put dot com.
Thanks.
It's one of those rushing things here that you, okay, it's sent now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jerusik. We will wait for the emails to arrive at a later time. But let's, let's get moving with the, with hearing the residents here. So, the first one, unless you want to change, the first one on my list here is Susannah Chiang.
Hi, yes, the way we're gonna order it is that Rob Webster is going to speak first.
Okay.
Then I will, then Wendy Hooker and Alan Burt, and then it will be Ross, sorry, then it will be Paul Steinberg.
Okay, so, I have Ross Webster, number one, Susannah yourself, two, Wendy Hooker as three. And then, four would be Anne and Roger?
No, would be Paul Steinberg.
Oh, Paul Steinberg, number four, and then Grace? We don't know.
I don't know who Grace is.
Is Grace here? Grace Trento-Du?
Hi.
Okay, you're here.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Grace. And do we have Anne and Roger Inkpen? Okay.
Yes, we're here.
Okay, perfect. Okay, there's a little bit of noise in the background. You may want to mute your, muted when you're not speaking, or see if, if your speakers are okay. So, I'm gonna start with number one, speaker Ross Webster. Please go ahead, Ross.
Yes, from my understanding, that this Committee of Adjustment meeting today was set to discuss the proposed plans. And that at, at a meeting such as this, we don't entertain changes during the meeting. The, the, the community, it hasn't been given a chance to, to, to view and consider these plans. We, we came prepared to discuss what's on the table, not what's been introduced just in the last few minutes, with plans hastily sent to the committee by email. We, we would like to go forward with our opposition presentation. I can take into account these numbers, but we really want to discuss this present, this proposal by the owner. And because it's such an extreme size of house, and such a out-of-character design and size for this neighborhood, that we, we really feel this is a very important discussion to hold. And we certainly oppose any house that's 10.7 meters in height. We even, we even have one of our speakers who, who has evidence that that the, the number 46 Sunny Point height was obtained by misinformation presented at the T-Lab discussion. And, and it was based on some information he assumed was correct regarding 62 Sunny Point.
Okay, so, so, we can comment on, on that piece, Ross, because that is, that is not in front of us, and we do not have evidence of that. What I hear from you is that you would like to carry on with expressing your concerns today. If, if this could be of benefit. The, the application has been modified today. No decision has been made, but it is, has been presented by the applicant at this time that there's been reduction in certain variances, and withdrawals of certain variances. There's been no increases to any of the variances. But fair enough, in order for you to better understand, you may need more time. And that's sort of totally, we have heard your concern and comment. But did you, were you able to capture the revisions?
I, I did. But I would like to speak to the current proposal, and because we oppose it, we don't feel it's fair to be discussing any changes right now. If, if they're not appropriate, and, and, and which we feel they aren't, we are, we are requesting that, that, we, we go through our, with our presentation, as is.
Sure.
Which I think is fair. And then, and then the Committee of Adjustment can, can form a decision on what we said, based on, not what was just, just brought to attention. But we really feel that this was done hastily, not through the normal channels. And it's not fair to the community, which is finding this, this a very precedent, precedent, sorry, precedent-setting.
Okay, we've heard that. Thank you, Ross, thank you for that. I would suggest, in, in the interest of time, if you can proceed with the, with the presentation. And for all the members who are here today, we appreciate your time and respect your attendance. But just want to make sure that if the, your comments have been expressed by another speaker, there's no point in repeating those same comments. It's not gonna advance your cause, it's just gonna delay the, the proceeding of the hearing today. So, if your comments or concerns have been captured by one speaker, I would request that you, i- if you have additional comments, please do so. But repeat, there's no point in repeating it. So, Mr. Ross, over to you, the floor is yours. Please go ahead, we'll give you five minutes to express your concerns.
Okay, well, ours, our speakers are, will be, our other speakers will be covering different thing, items. Good morning, everyone. My name is Ross Webster. My wife and I have lived at 21 Brooklawn Avenue for 33 years. And we live within the notification zone of this variant.
Sorry for interjecting, do you, are you reading off something that we've already received?
No, absolutely not. I sent in a, a letter, but this is my presentation to the Committee of Adjustment.
Go ahead. I just want to make sure that we're not, the, the members are, would not read from letters that they've already sent to us, because we've already read those.
I wouldn't waste your time with that. I want to keep within the five minutes, which I'm losing at the moment.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I would like to express my opposition to the requested variances, many of which are extremely excessive, and if allowed, would result in a massive structure that is totally out of character with the prevailing built form of our, in our neighborhood. This application has shocked and angered a huge number of resident homeowners in our area, who unanimously opposed this plan. There are 23 individual letters on file with the committee that were submitted on time, expressing this opposition. There are many additional neighbors, who are also outraged by this proposal, but weren't able to submit a written objection before the deadline. I'm asking the Committee of Adjustment to reject this application on the grounds that the requested variances, both individually and collectively, are terribly out of line with the four tests under the Planning Act. The requested variances are major, not minor. Any superficial modifications to this house plan as presented will not be enough to make this an acceptable application. Now, and to make efficient use of the committee's time, only four neighbors will be presenting, each of us addressing different variances. Please keep in mind that all four, now it's five, I believe, represent the views of the huge majority of the resident homeowners in the area. Our fourth and final speaker, or, of our group, will also address the, the June 15th petition yesterday, that supports this application, and also comment on the Community Planning Report for Action dated June 15. I will focus on variance number one, which, in the proposal, requests a gross floor area of 365.5 square meters, which is 1.8 times the allowable GFA of 204 square meters. This is almost double what is allowed. This proposed house is so excessive, it appears to have been designed without any consideration for the size of house that the bylaws allow for in our neighborhood, on a lot size of 406.5 square meters. Floor space index is an unprecedented, unprecedented 0.9. Please refer to the C of A decision chart on page 26 of the, the CA Letter of Objection for 68 Sunny Point. This chart shows a list of all of the properties in the Greater Cliffcrest community that have made a variance request in the past 14 years. The requested floor space index of 0.9 for 68 Sunny Point is the highest on record, and by a huge margin. The, the next highest being 0.67. There's also the photo overlay on the next page, 27, in the same letter, which shows the proposed house superimposed over the existing house. It illustrates very well how huge this house would be, and how much it towers over the, the two houses on either side. And Toronto's official plan. And Toronto's official plan, and I quote, "sets a policy framework for managing growth in ways that will reinforce the qualities of the city that are most valued by its residents, its distinctly livable communities." Toronto's official plan also states that the development established in established neighborhoods will respect and reinforce the existing physical character of each geographic neighborhood, including in particular the 4.1.5C, the prevailing heights, massing, scale, density, and dwelling type of nearby residential property. There is not a single house in our neighborhood that comes anywhere close to the requested gross floor area of 665.5 square meters or a floor space index of 0.9. To me, it is obvious that the proposed building does not fulfill the intent and purpose of the official plan. It is for all of the above reasons that I urge the members of the committee to refuse this application and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Any questions for the presenter? See, thank you very much. Next, I have Susannah Chung as the speaker. Please go ahead, Susannah.
Hello, my name is Susannah Chung. My family and I live at 70 Sunny Point Crescent. We are the abutting neighbors on the north side of the subject property. The existing driveways between 68 and 70 Sunny Point Crescent are attached and have been used for decades as mutual driveways while not being registered on title. The dwelling separation distance is quite narrow relative to other properties in the neighborhood. The longstanding mutual use will be gone. Although many of the variances requested significantly impact us, I would like to draw the members' attention to two variances, the front yard setback and the lot coverage. Other variances are being addressed by our other neighbors. Variance number three, the permitted front yard setback is 5.98 meters. The proposed front yard setback is five and a half meters. I understand that this has been removed, but with all the changes that they have put in, I think it's important that I explain why we object to the variance, and we need to have time to understand what is happening with the plan. So there's a lot of changes, and this is too much to go through right now. But so I'm going to go through it. If allowed with variance number three, the new house will not only be closer to our house, but closer to the street. The separation distance between the dwelling will be cut in half. 68 Sunny Point Crescent is already the closest house to the road. Our house is set further back because we're on the northern curve in the street. If the application is allowed, it will materially reduce our view of the bluffs and lake. We spend much of our free time, including family meal times, outside on our front deck enjoying a spectacular view of Lake Ontario and the bluffs. If this application is allowed, it will significantly reduce our quality of life and our property value. I'll speak to variance number four now, increased lot coverage. The permitted lot coverage is 33 percent. The proposed lot coverage is 40 percent. They're going down to 38.9 percent, which to me is not material at all. Drainage has been and continues to be a major issue in this part of the Cliffcrest community. Many of the houses on Sunny Point Crescent and Brooklawn Avenue, including the subject property, have installed sun pumps to assist in keeping their basements dry. Many of the sun pumps operate on a 24/7 basis. An over-coverage dwelling will exacerbate the significant neighborhood problem. We need to optimize the soft landscaping in this area to permit maximum groundwater absorption and reduce flooding. 68 Sunny Point has a sun pump which discharges water onto the driveway. In the winter, the water from the sun pump runoff often freezes, creating a sheet of ice covering the entire driveway. In addition, snow accumulates at the side of the house, and when it melts, it flows down our driveway. This creates a very dangerous condition for our family, particularly our aging parents. We pour salt on the driveway, but it keeps getting washed away as the steady flow of water discharging from the sun pump flushes it onto the street. And Sunny Point has no sidewalks. The families are walking near with young children, often along this local street. My husband and I would welcome reasonable development in our neighborhood. But these are not minor variances to us. It will have a major negative impact on our family and the bluff ecosystem. We need time to understand what the new drawings mean, and as such, we join with our neighbors in requesting that you refuse this application. Thank you for this opportunity to address the committee. Suzanne and Jamie.
Thank you, Susannah. Thank you very much for expressing your comments and concerns. Next person on the list to speak is Wendy Hooker. Wendy, are you there?
Good morning. My husband would like to speak. If he has difficulties, can I take over for him?
Yes, sure. No problem. Please go ahead.
Yes, good morning, panel members and staff. We are Alan Burt and Wendy Hooker, and we have lived at 50 Sunny Point Crescent for 42 years. As a consequence, we have seen a lot of changes in the neighborhood. We join the 24 residents of the Cliffcrest community, the principal stakeholders, who express their concerns and requested a refusal of the application requested by Mr. Zamaal Hussain and his agent, Arc Design Group Development Services, Inc. There are several additional households in the community who were unable to submit their objections due to the June 9 deadline. Although the application asked for 10 variances, we draw the members' attention to the three platform variances, which I understand have now been withdrawn.
Somewhat.
However, they are still... individually and collectively, they are particularly egregious and result in a dwelling that does not fall within the prevailing character of this part of the Cliffcrest community. Specifically, its variances seven, eight, and nine, the decks, platforms, and amenities. Platforms that are above the second story of a detached house. In the RD zone, a platform such as the duck or balcony with access from the second story or above a detached house must comply with the following. There may be no more than a total of four platforms, and no more than one on each of the front, rear, and each side of the detached house, and be the maximum area of each platform, eight hundred and forty meters, four square meters. The proposed two platforms are located on the front wall and are not a common feature on this block. Opposed massive size of the two platforms, 12.6 and 93.2, individually and collectively are well beyond anything in this immediate neighborhood. Platforms would overlook on all levels and directions every existing home in the immediate vicinity. Effectively, these families will be denied any reasonable expectation of privacy, both within their homes and within their backyards. Variance number seven, the permitted number of platforms is one, so they are asking for two, and a second for a balcony, and a third for a deck. The surrounding home all comply to this zoning requirement of one platform. The second for a platform is 12.6 square meters, more than three times that allowed. And the third for a platform is again limited to four, asking for 93.2. These platforms are well beyond anything found in the immediate context or the Greater Cliffcrest community. One of the major things, of course, too, is requesting access to the third floor. The one at 62, which is often cited as the precedent for that, does not have third floor access. It is merely a, it's an attic room accessible by a ladder and has windows. So the occupants cannot actually use it. And so we support the comments of the two earlier speakers, and respect the request that the application be denied. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will now move to the fourth speaker, Paul Steinberg. Paul, are you online with us?
Thank you. Just to move you around. I need to do that.
Paul, are you there?
Paul?
Yes, we can hear you, Paul. Paul, please proceed with your presentation.
So, good morning.
Good morning. Good afternoon.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you very much. My name is Paul Steinberg. My family and I live at 58 Sunny Point Crescent. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, sorry, sorry.
No problem.
I'm sorry. So we live within the notification zone of this variance application.
They can. You're on a delay.
I'm sorry. My partner's listening on YouTube, and the delay is...
Yes, so you may have to switch off your YouTube, because it'll be like a radio show then, right? You're trying to hear from outside.
And that's exactly the experience we just had. My partner came running in, saying you can't hear me.
Yes, so if you can...
I'm hearing you in real time, so we can.
Perfect. So please mute your YouTube. Thank you.
Yes, so thank you very much for allowing us to express our concerns. Like, you know, other members have said, there are four of us speaking here today, but we're representing many more in the community. I'm here to wrap this up, so let me specifically address the variances related to the height, both stories and dwelling height. So variance number five, bylaw 569-2013, section 10 dot 20 dot 40 dot 10, paragraph 4A. So this deals with the restrictions of a detached house with a flat or shallow roof. The current bylaw limits homes with a flat or shallow roof to a height of 7.2 meters. This proposal at 10.7 meters does not even attempt to conform to the prevailing house sizes in the neighborhood or the existing bylaw. Now, we're a community of single-story bungalows that are gradually giving way to new two-story, single-family homes. In the immediate-context neighborhood, there are 60 homes, 34 are bungalows, 26 are two-story dwellings. There are zero three-story homes. At three stories and at a height of 10.7 meters, this home is going to have no equal. As a layperson, I was dumbstruck that a 3.5-meter overage in height and a full-third story would attempt to be classified as a minor variance. The proposed dwelling would remove all privacy from the neighboring homes while leaving them in its shade. And just so you understand, every single home touching this property is a bungalow. Now, in my letter of objection, I included photos of number 62 Sunny Point Crescent. I don't know if you can bring that up, but it's a few doors south of this site. I'm bringing your attention to this property, as it was used incorrectly as precedence by Arc Designs in their T-Lab appeal for number 46 Sunny Point Crescent. From the street, number 62 appears to have a third floor, complete with a walkout access. And while that was how it was presented to T-Lab, it is not the case, as you can see in the 3D satellite view. Now, I've been able to speak with the current occupants. They explained that the space is best described as part attic, part light well for the second floor. The attic space is accessible only by ladder. There are no internal stairs. And the light well section is completely open to the second floor. There is no habitable or usable space. The rooftop is not a platform. It is not even accessible. A third-floor deck was directly refused by the committee of adjustment for number 62 in October of 2013. And in January of 2018, the community planning group refused to have any habitable space for the second floor of number 48. Now, regarding the report for action that was filed yesterday afternoon, we can't understand this at all. The document doesn't recommend that you approve any of these variances. It only suggests that if the committee of adjustment does approve them, that the home, when built, has to look like the one in the drawings. It doesn't address any of these bylaw issues, and we feel it should be given no merit. Now, we've had the opportunity to review the petition in support that was submitted by the applicant, and we don't feel this document should be given any weight whatsoever. In contrast to the letters of opposition that we've submitted from dozens of homeowners in the immediate context, there is no indication that any of these people on this list have consented to having their names used. The vast majority live outside the immediate context, outside the notification zone, and some completely outside of Cliffcrest. You know, a brief internet search of two companies that the applicant owns...
30 seconds left.
Albean Building. Yep, Albean Building. So the, all of the names on this letter have either a family connection or a financial relationship with the applicant. So we've always welcomed appropriate development to the neighborhood, but the sheer scale of the variances requested would create an unwanted negative precedent. So in summary, it's too big, it's too tall, and the platforms are beyond the pale. So we ask you to please help protect our community and reject the submission. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Very well presented. Any questions for Mr. Steinberg? I see none. Let's move on to our next presenter or speaker. Do we have Grace online? Grace? Grace, would you like...
Hi there.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
I actually had no intention of speaking, but given the opportunity, I just want to thank my neighbors for being so eloquent and articulate. I really just briefly want to add that I guess I am the neighbor that the developer did not speak to that is directly impacted, so I am the neighbor on the west side. I have not yet been spoken to by the developer. I also want to add that I do have a disability pertaining to anxiety, and that I object to these major variances that will negatively impact both my mental and my physical well-being. And I ask that this disability be taken into consideration. As far as I'm concerned, my neighbors have articulated their concerns very, very well. But on a personal note, I think that this dwelling will absolutely impact my mental well-being and also my physical challenges that I already experienced. It's one of the reasons that I purchased this house, and I currently have a view, a very small view of the lake and a gorgeous view of the sky. It's one of the things that supports my mental health. I think this is excessive, and I really, that's all I need to say about that.
Thank you, Grace.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate you have articulated your concerns very well as well. Any questions for Grace at this time? I see none. We do have Anne and Roger as well online. Anne and Roger, would you like to speak?
Hello. We also didn't intend to speak because we're here in support of our neighbors.
Anne, you're with us?
I lost connection.
Go ahead. We have you.
I'm really sorry. We're just here in support and want to thank our neighbors for their presentation, and that we live a couple of houses away. And we support respectable two-story homes that are within minor variances, but we are not in support of this particular build that is on hand today. That's about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anne. We do have your written comments on file with us, and we have read through the comments, and they're pretty detailed. So thank you, all the speakers and residents who have written to take the time to express your concerns. We are now going to, before we move forward, any comment at this point from members of the committee? Okay, so now we're going to turn to Mr. Jerusich to, in five minutes, if you can, address the concerns that have been raised by the residents.
Okay, so in speaking with the neighbors' concerns, I have my client here as well. They did speak with both neighbors. We thought that that's been resolved. In terms of sun pump issues, those will be addressed in terms of the regrading. Sun pump can be diverted. We still do have width in between the houses of over 3.8 meters that my client has discussed with the neighbor, saying that that mutual drive at 3.8 meters can still be used for them to access the rear yard, and they have no concern about that. Of course, it's not going to be as large for two cars, because we have our own driveway now, but we will be maintaining that as discussed with the neighbor. In light of the fact that there is, we did reduce it quite a bit. The neighbor, we did, as the requirement is here, 5.98 front yard setback. We have adjusted that to over seven meters now to allow them a better view. I think that that, and we did it to the max where we now don't infringe upon any rear yard setbacks or building depth issues as well. So, we were able to push the house back over seven meters from the front yard setback. But in light of all the changes and the fact that the neighbors haven't had a chance to look at this, and in discussion with my client here to see if we can assist the neighbor even further by maybe reducing some of the height, at this point, we'd request a deferral, and we would set up a, a community meeting to go through the revised plans with them, and we would request that we defer this signee die.
Mr. Jerusik, I think you read my mind. I was on the same page. Given the extent and scope of changes that have been put forward today by yourself, and we respect that, and we do appreciate that you're trying to sort of remove a lot of concerns, but I think it's fair that adequate time be given to the residents and the neighbors to be able to review the changes, to be able to digest them, and, and sort of work in collaboration with the neighbors to come up with something that makes everyone happy. So, I really appreciate you and your owner's proposal at this time. And at that point, I guess I would turn to the committee members. So, Mr. Jerusik is sort of recommending a deferral signee die to be able to take more time to consult with the neighbors and, and then work on those revisions that were discussed today. Is that something that we can...
Yes, I totally agree with what you've just said, Madam Chair. Yes.
Okay. Member Said?
Yes, Madam Chair, I really appreciate Mr. Jerusik himself as, you know, volunteered for going back to the residents to have a second round of consultation with them, which is very important. I also appreciate the comments given by the residents. This was really, very, very, you know, some of them were really important issue, and hopefully, when they talk with the owner and the agent, we are looking forward that there is a mutual understanding and a better relationship there, and then we can look into the application once again.
Thank you, Member Said. Member M, you have comments?
Yes, I too was about to suggest whether the applicant was willing to consider deferral. I, I do have a little bit of an issue with the height, so I'm, I'm pleased to hear that you're willing to go back to the drawing board and try to see what can be done to brought down that height. And I do think it's very important that we give the, the neighboring community time to digest some of these revisions. So, thank you for working with the community on this one.
Okay, thank you, Member M. So, if there are no further comments at this time, can I please have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that this matter be adjourned, signee die.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to adjourn or to defer the item signee die. Okay, and we have a seconder. Member M seconds the motion. All in favor of this motion, motions carried. So, Mr. Jerusik, your application has been deferred, signee die to allow you more time to consult with the neighbors, in particular, the ones who attended today, and the immediate neighbors to discuss the revisions and come up with something that works for everyone. Thank you for your time today. Thank you, all the presenters.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Madam Chair, I notice it's around twelve-thirty. I'm okay. I will keep going, but do you want to consider any kind of washroom break or anything like that?
Sure. Okay, so if we can take just five minutes for a quick nature break, this is, it's twelve-thirty-two at this time. We should be back in about exactly five minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, guys, we're adjourned. Colin, is that okay with you? We just have a quick, a quick break, eh?
Terrific. Thank you.
Amy, we, Member Amy, we have a five-minute break.
A chocolate bar already here. It's taking a little longer than we expected. Yeah, I guess number thirteen is going to be contentious too, so. Did we have a particular time slot for YouTube? I mean, in terms of a window? We should have checked with you about the break, sorry. Okay, I'll work hard to do that.
Okay. Welcome back, everyone. We are on item number twelve. Item number twelve is one-one-two Fair Glenn Avenue, one-hundred-and-twelve Fair Glenn Avenue. And this is a minor variance application to requesting, to construct a new second-floor addition to the existing single-family dwelling. And we have registered participants as William, Bill Harrison, who's the agent, and we have Chris Kisher. I'm not sure if that person is representing the applicant or the owner or a member of the resident, of public. So, before we begin, members of the committee, first, first of all, William Harrison, are you online with us? You may need to mute all other devices except your microphone.
The only device I have.
It seems like you connected in three different places, so maybe you need to switch off everything else but the microphone you're speaking in. Hello? We're getting a lot of echo and, and noise.
You should perhaps just log into one device.
Yes. So, Bill, you need to log into one device only. It's showing that you're, you're logged in at three, through three different devices. So, maybe you need to log out of it or move them away and speak into the microphone from the device you're speaking, you're using. Can you check? Hello?
It's working.
Okay, we're, we're still getting that. So, you've dropped on one. That's good. Can you unmute? Can you mute all others? Okay, Bill, can you say something?
Yes, hello.
That's much better. Thank you very much. I think because you were logged into three different devices, that's what was causing the issue. So, we have, no, no problem, no problem. It's always the first time for all of us. So, we have William Harrison as the agent on this application. And, members of the committee, are there any questions for the applicant or would you like to have a presentation? We have before us two, three variances on this application. I did not see any conditions, or were there any conditions? There are conditions from urban forestry? There is one condition from urban forestry. Bill, are you aware of those conditions?
No, I'm not, actually.
Are there conditions on, from urban forestry? Okay, you're not aware of that condition. Staff, I don't have the memo from urban forestry. Could you, could you please let me know which condition that is?
Through you, Chair. Urban forestry is recommending a condition to submit a application to permit or injure a privately-owned tree.
Bill, did you hear that condition?
I heard that. I'm not sure where that tree is, but we'll comply with that.
Okay. All right, so it's a permit to remove or injure a tree, right, Brian? Okay, all right, so we have that condition in front of us. If, I, I guess we will use that condition, and if there's any concerns, then maybe you'll have to discuss with urban forestry at that point. Members of the committee, would you like to have a presentation from Bill, or do you have any questions at this time? Member M, please go ahead.
Hi there, Bill. I'm just wondering, would you be agreeable to possibly putting up a privacy fence on, on the second-floor platform? I'm, I'm just a little bit concerned about possible overlook to one-oh-eight as well as one-sixteen Fair Glenn. I mean, have you spoken to those neighbors? Do they have any concerns with, with that?
I'm hoping, actually, the owner is Chris Kisher, and I'm hoping that he's online also.
Chris, are you online? Chris Kisher?
Yes, I am. Hi there.
Hi, perfect. Thank you. We just wanted to confirm if you were online.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that something you would be willing to consider, just in the off-chance that, that your neighbors are just not familiar with this process or isn't, aren't able to join us today, that you could possibly consider putting some privacy fencing on that second-floor platform?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
On which sides would that be, Member M?
Um, well, I'm mostly concerned with one-oh-eight as it's closer to one-oh-eight. And if, if it could be put on that, is that south, is that the south side? Yes, that's the south side.
So, we, we do have a, a privacy fence at the moment there.
No, on the, on the platform that you're proposing, the second-story platform.
Oh, okay.
So, privacy screen?
Privacy screen? Yes, definitely. That, that is a concern.
Member M, do you have a specification, like the height of that privacy fence?
Um, I think, I think typically, bylaw requirement is one-point-eight meters.
And opaque?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we have...
There's that elevation, yeah.
Okay, so we have a recommendation. Go ahead, Chris.
We, we are planning on that to put, actually, plants, like, like tree pots and so forth around the area to not only for privacy but also for ourselves.
Okay.
However, I, I don't believe, like, foliage, like, would it be one-point-eight meters high?
Yes, in some areas, yeah, we were planning on having it like that. But yes, we'd be happy to do either one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Committee members, any further questions for Bill or Chris?
Can I, can I ask a question here?
Sure.
I think the plan was that we would have containers the required height of a guardrail, which would be one-point-two meters, and then those would also have plants in them, which would evenly raise it to the required one-point-eight meters for privacy. Is that adequate to satisfy your concern?
Was that a...
It would be my preference, it would be my preference if it was a privacy screen. Because a privacy screen is not subject to, like, dying and, and being replaced. It's, it's something that is much lower maintenance and will ensure privacy versus, I mean, foliage is, is harder to regulate in that matter.
I understand that that's more nebulous, I would say.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I would emphasize is that not only do the owners want privacy for their neighbors, they also want privacy for themselves.
And that's why I'm asking if you would be agreeable to, to put in privacy screens, please.
That's why I'm suggesting that they would certainly, they're planning a green roof and many other facets of this that are going to be very, very environmentally responsible and, and intense, actually. So, I'm sure that they will maintain whatever foliage part of this scheme.
Okay, thank you very much. If I can also... Okay, thank you very much. Um, if I can also suggest that if we can um, add a condition that the, um, should the committee choose to approve this application? That the construction be built and, uh, or should be in substantial accord, be built and substantially in accordance with the plans that have been submitted with the application? And this is predominantly to ensure that the front yard reduction is only for that small portion of the building that is jutting out and not for the entirety of the length of the main wall, the front wall.
Okay.
Okay, so it's just to capture that, that piece there. If there are no further questions, um, can I please have a motion? Member M, please go ahead.
I put forward a motion subject to the provision of a privacy screen on the south side, as well as a condition tying the uh, development to the plans submitted today, uh, uh, for approval, please.
And there are conditions of urban forestry?
Sorry, I apologize. And, and I include the conditions of urban forestry in my motion.
Thank you, Member M. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the subject application, subject to the conditions of urban forestry, subject to the condition that a privacy fence be installed on the south side of the, the proposed deck. Um, and that the approval be tied to the plans that are on file or submitted with this application. May I have a seconder, please?
Ma'am Chair, I'll second that motion, please.
Member McKay seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. Motion's carried. Your application has been approved, subject to the conditions as I listed. Thank you. Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, we now move to item number thirteen. Item number thirteen is fifty-three Dorset Road. Before I begin, um, do we have the applicant and the agent? I have the participants listed as Faisal Emad, who is the applicant and the agent. And then we have a member, um, of the public, Glenn Swarich, who is in opposition. Is Faisal online with us?
Yes, Madam Chair, yeah.
Thank you. Glenn, are you online with us? Glenn? Are you online with us? Okay, we will call again. Um. Okay, Glenn, we, we can see you online, but we can't hear you. Could you say something? Could you unmute his, can you unmute your mic, please? Glenn, could you say something, please? Brian, can you see him online? Okay. Alright, so we'll proceed with the application. So the purpose of this. Glenn?
Yes.
Perfect, now we hear you. Thank you. Can you hear us well?
Oh, yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Could you just stay online with us while we proceed with this application? So we have in front of us an application for fifty-three Dorset Road. Uh, the purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling. And we have before us, um, seven, eight, no, nine, nine variances that have been requested for this application. Uh, members of the committee, would you like to have a presentation from Faisal or are there any questions for Faisal? There are no questions. I don't see a request for presentation. Faisal, would you like to say something to, for your application before we move to Glenn to hear his concerns?
I'm fine, fine, I'd like, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Faisal. So, uh, Glenn, please proceed. Uh, please let us know of your concerns on this application.
Okay, I'm concerned, I'm a resident of fifty Slowly Road. It's actually on the diagram part of my house. My wife and I both object to this, uh, major variances. Uh, number one, number two, number six, number seven, number eight, as, as per the, on the list, particularly number seven. I have a couple of concerns as well. One is concerning the drainage in the area. Uh, this is, um. Where this property is located, fifty-three Dorset, uh, its drainage, it's fine now. But I'm concerned that any change in the gradient, even though the plant said there was not to be any, uh, it will affect, um, my area. I do have a sewage drain on the other side of the property, but I'm concerned that all the construction work will affect the natural drainage and will, um. Negatively affect me. That's a concern. My other concern is about the trees. Two large trees that are shown on the property line are actually on my side of the property, although they have encroached on the other property because of their size. Huge. I'm worried about them. They're healthy. On the property itself, there are three birches. One is dead. And, uh, they will be, uh, removed for the house. Uh, one for one is insufficient. It should be a ten for one to, due to the size and maturity of those, those trees. Now, my strong objection to the variance is particularly number seven. This is well in excess of current gener- generous allowances for buildings. This, the back of the, the property comes to my window. So just on the, on a diagram there, just above where it says, uh, number fifty. That's my bedroom window. So, uh, we would not appreciate the fact that there will be an upper deck. Practically, I'll be able to, to borrow sugar from my morning coffee out of my bedroom window. I'm not happy with that whatsoever. That is not a minor variance. We're talking about going from an allowed, probably, I'll have to use feet, I'm sorry. Twenty-six hundred square foot to three thousand square foot dwelling. That's a, quite a significant variance. That additional size of the lot coverage is comparable to condominiums that are being built on Kingston Road worth half a million. Which leads me to also question in the diagram there, they have a, a separate back entrance leading to underground. So I, even though it's not part of the variances being requested, I do have another concern that this will be built with a basement apartment in mind. Uh, because there are two separate rear entrances, one to the basement.
So we can, sorry, sorry, Glenn, if I may just interject here. Uh, we can't speak to who's going to be occupying those units or, uh, we're, all we're considering today are the variances that are before us. So I would appreciate if you could, like you did, you, you certainly expressed very clearly that you had concerns with number seven, one and two, and there was, I think, nine as well. So if you can, uh, um, have your concerns related to the variances that are before us.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so it is simply too big. It is, the community sta- standards allow for a very generous sized two-story building. We have no objection to that. These variances are well in excess of that. It is unnecessary. We are both, my wife and I, uh, are very concerned. The setback is not in line. There's like, a, a house that just went up next door to it. I believe that was fifty-five, which uses the, the, the proper variant, proper allowances and is fine. A number of houses going in, they're all fine. We, there is absolutely no need to exceed the current allowances. And these variances, uh, we strongly ob- object to all of them.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Uh, just for record, we also have two other, uh, two more letters of opposition on file with us. Uh, members of the committee, any questions for Glenn at this time? I see none. Glenn, is there anything else that you would want to add before we move on to the applicant or is that it?
Um. No, I, 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 the only thing I would like to add is we enjoy seeing the trees and our view of the sky and the sun, the western view from our bedroom is fine.
Okay.
And with this. Uh, obscures everything, wrecks everything.
Thank you very much. You had a comment on drainage, so I can let you know that drainage issues are outside of the scope of this committee. And I'm sure, um, staff in the building department will review it through the building permit applications to ensure that, um, there's no impact, um, as it relates to drainage on adjacent properties or in the neighborhood. As far as trees are concerned, we do have comments and conditions from urban forestry that we have, we are considering today. So, um, I can't speak to over and above, but there are definitely two conditions from urban forestry, uh, with that regards, uh, in terms of, uh, removal of trees and planting in lieu or payment in lieu of the trees. So moving along, um, uh, Faisal, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm listening, yes.
Okay, Faisal, so you heard the concerns, uh, expressed by Glenn. Uh, could you please address those concerns?
Yes, the first concern I had about pouring the salt or sugar, I think it is too far to do that. Because we have a setback from the deck is thirty-three meter, more than thirty-three meter, and after that. Uh, the, uh, number, I mean, you have neighbor, yes, at least five or six. We have enough setback from the house and also we are not touching the trees that he can enjoy like from bedroom at this moment, nothing changing.
What, what are your thoughts on the, the requested building depth? Uh, Glenn has a concern with the requested building depth. Do you, could you, um, could you advise us on that particular variance? Why do you need that building depth?
The reason is the. House for my client. This is their home.
Sorry, we're getting a lot of interruption. We can't hear you well.
Can you, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, yes. Please go ahead.
Sorry about, sorry about that. I mean, this is not, this is not a, a house that for business. This is their dream home. They have two kids. They want to make their home here. They want to grow their kids here. So right now they're living in a smaller house, so they're move, they're planning to move into this to grow up their kids. So that's why, that's the main reason they want bigger house. That's why I.
No, you didn't answer my question. I was asking, uh, how would you like to, um, like, you, you are requesting a variance for the building depth. So do you need.
That's how it came up with, like.
Okay.
Need a bigger house? Yeah, that, that's why we, we are in that area.
Okay, so you, so your client, uh, wants a bigger house and that's what's causing the variance for the depth? Okay. Member Said has a question for you.
Faisal, you heard one of the issue by the Glenn was the privacy issue, and we have, uh, community planning, uh, observations on that too. So would you be willing to put, uh, fence, um, screening, um, along the north side of second floor? Which is about like one point eight meter height?
Uh, on the, on the balcony, for the balcony, right?
Yeah, to mitigate the, uh, issue of privacy of, um, as Glenn mentioned.
It's a condition in community planning staff report, Faisal.
Yeah, we are fine. We're okay. That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
I, I can remember that we already have filed agreed. Well, that, that I can remember. Had some email correspondence and we agreed.
Sorry, we were getting interruption again.
I'm saying, I, I, I can remember that we had this, uh, like email correspondence about this privacy issue and why, as far I remember that we agreed already.
Okay, so you are in agreement with the proposed recommendation by staff?
Yes, that's fine. We have no problem.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Member M, please go ahead. You have a question.
Hi, Mr. Faisal. So, um, you know, you heard the concerns from your neighbor to the rear. And while I appreciate that you do not need a rear yard setback variance, that you do have twelve meters from the main wall to the property line. Um, in order to just, you know, be neighborly, would you be willing to consider the removal of the, the building depth variance? Um, you do have a significant number of variances before us today, and I think as a measure of good faith, it would be something that you may want to consider with, with your, uh, clients. I, I do recognize some of the other variances before us, um, are fairly minor in numeric, numerically. But, you know, number seven is, is the one that is causing the most amount of grievances. And by reducing number seven and eliminating it, I think you're gonna help with number one, which would be the lot coverage. And I think that that would be, I think that would be the neighborly thing to do.
Of course, I mean, I would like to do that. Of, of course, we respect the comments from the neighbor. To increase the privacy, to increase the separation, we can, if he wants, we can plant more, uh, trees. We can, uh, higher, hi- make the fence higher. He wants, because, I mean, for, to address that, as, as you know, that we didn't, uh, uh, cross the limit of, uh, rear area setbacks. So to respect his concern, uh, if we reduce the, uh, like, depth of the house, that is, that might have a long term, permanent impact on the, on that family. That those are dreaming to live in bigger house, grow up their kids, right? For that.
You will, you will still be getting a bigger house than what you're allowed today, right? Because you're going slightly larger in height. Uh, you're going, uh, larger in floor space, um, as well as, uh, side yard setbacks. I'm, I'm, I'm just merely suggesting that, uh, to, you know, to work together. Um, I think that requesting you even slightly reduce number seven to, let's say, twenty meters by one point six meters. I, I really don't see that as being a major impact in, in, in your client's design. However, I think you would go a long way to, um, you know, show that you're willing to work with the community and your neighbors, who will be long-term your neighbors. And you, you would want to keep that in mind, that going forward, if, if this is their dream house that they're gonna be living in for the unforeseeable future. You don't want to necessarily set the tone as, as such a, such a negative tone. So I think, you know, I, I, if I, if I could press that, you know, maybe a slight reduction in a number seven would be, would be the neighborly thing to do.
Okay, so you're, you're advising to, from, right, we have twenty-one point six eight.
So what Amy has just suggested is a slight reduction in the depth of the building.
Okay.
Number seven, so how much, so, so is there a number that you're, you're agree, you're in agreement with? What would that depth be then? If you were to revise the building depth, what would that be?
Is that okay if we?
Faisal, can you hear us?
So, yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, but we're getting some interruptions. Maybe you need to.
I don't know why, I mean. I'm, I'm just very close to the mouth speaker. Okay, so I'm saying, I mean, is that okay if I, if we do that twenty-one? It does it?
How, okay, so, so the suggestion is.
Now we have twenty-one.
So just say, okay, so you're saying twenty-one?
Yep.
And, and how does that affect your, um, variance number one?
As well as variance number two.
As well as variance number two. So when you shave off that, that portion at the back, that would result in, uh, some change to the lot coverage percentage as well as the floor space. Um.
Right.
As presented. So could you, uh, Amy, I'm a little hesitant in, in doing this on the fly.
Okay, well, um, I mean, we could, we could recognize the existing requests for one and two, um, but allowing, um. Number seven to be reduced. I'm, I, I don't, I, I appreciate your concern. I mean, ultimately, I, I do, I do think that the variances individually are, are minor numerically as well as impact. But I, I completely appreciate the concern from the existing neighbor. Um, so I was just merely trying to help sort of create a little bit of, of a compromise between the two. But I'm prepared to move forward if it is as is. I don't know. I don't know how you want me to.
Okay, alright, um.
If you can, I, I don't mind, I, I respect Amy's advice. Respect and concern.
Faisal, can you please speak into the microphone closer?
Yes, I, I'm, who, why, sorry about that. So I'm saying, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, no, I'm saying that, uh, thank you very much for your very positive advice and also I respect your advice and respect neighbor's concern. We are okay to reduce, uh, a little bit point eight. Or we will be very happy if you go ahead with whatever we have right now as is. Otherwise, we can reduce point eight.
No change? Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Faisal. Because we don't, I'm a little hesitant today to, in the absence of correct calculations and numbers, I'll be a little hesitant to make those changes on the fly. Members of the committee, any further questions at this time, or would you like to have a motion?
Madam Chair, I think the, the variances are minor. So I will go ahead. I feel comfortable for moving a motion for approval of this application, subject to the condition of community planning, putting the privacy fence as well as the urban forestry.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the application as is and recommending conditions of community planning as, as recommended by staff from community planning, as well as the conditions of urban forestry. May I have a second or please? Member M seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. Motion is carried. Your application has been approved as is and there are no modifications, subject to the conditions listed. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number fourteen. Item number fourteen is, the property address is forty-five Lampman Drive. The purpose of the application is to construct a new attached garage to the existing two-story, single-family residential dwelling. And we have one variance before us. On the list of registered participants, I have for item number fourteen, Amar Roba as the agent. Amar, are you online with us?
I, I'm here.
Thank you, Amar. Members of the, and I do not have any other registered participant, nor do I have any letters on file, either in support or in opposition. So I will ask the committee members if you have any particular questions of the applicant at this time. There are no questions for Amar, the agent. If there are no questions, can I please have a motion? And I believe there is a urban forestry condition. Okay, Member M, please go ahead.
I put forward a motion of approval subject to the urban forestry conditions.
Thank you. May I have a second or please?
Yes, Chair, I'll second that.
Member McKay seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. Motion's carried. Amar, your application has been approved, subject to condition of urban forestry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to the next item, item number fifteen. Item number fifteen is for eight-five-eight Danforth Road. And the purpose of this application is to construct a new two-story north addition with an integral garage and new second-story addition. And the alterations also include a second suite with a separate access. We have before us three variances for this application. On the registered list of participants, I have Ramanpreet Sandhu. Ramanpreet, are you online with us at this time?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Thank you, Ramanpreet. I do not have any other registered participant on this application. Before we proceed, Ramanpreet, members of the committee, would you like to have a presentation on this application? Or any questions for Mr. Sandhu? I do not see any comments or questions for Mr. Sandhu. Member M, you're okay? Okay, all right. So if there are no questions for Mr. Sandhu, can I please have a motion? We have an urban forestry condition. Mr. Sandhu, you are aware of that condition from urban forestry?
Yes, ma'am, we are happy to take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Members.
Chair, I'll move that the application be, be approved as is, subject to the urban forestry condition.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve the application, subject to conditions of urban forestry. Have a second or please. Member Said seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. Motion's carried. Your application has been approved, subject to conditions of urban forestry, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ma'am.
Thank you. We now move to item number sixteen. Item number sixteen is for the address eight-seventy-five Middlefield Road and three-thirty-five Passmore Avenue. And the purpose of this application is to construct a new one-story, approximately three thousand seventy-nine square meters addition to join the existing industrial building at eight-seventy-five Middlefield Road and three-thirty-five Passmore. And the two properties have been merged on as one lot. What we have before us are two variances for this application. I have two registered participants for this application, Alexis Richter and Larry May, the agent and the architect. Do we have Alexis and Larry online?
Yes, Alexis is here.
Larry, are you online? Okay, so we're gonna roll call again, but for now, we have Alexis, the agent on the application with us. Members of the committee, do you have any, would you like to have a presentation? Or do you, do you have any questions for Alexis?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Member Said has a question, and then Member M will be second. Go ahead.
Alexis, could you just please elaborate very briefly? The number of parking spots available before the two lots are merged together, what's the breakup of that and after when the two properties are merged together? And how this variance is coming up because of the merger?
Sorry, I apologize. I think I'm having a bit of a poor connection. I can't, I didn't quite get all of that.
Could you repeat that question, Member Said?
Okay, Alexis, I just wanted to have a clear picture of the parking spots available before merger of the two lots. And once the merger has been taken place. So could you give me a breakup of that?
I don't actually have the statistics of what they were before we, we merged them, like specifically. But I can tell you what we are proposing. So we are proposing to have a total of a hundred and fifty parking spaces provided for the merge and.
Member Said, she does not have the pre-merger stats as it relates to parking, but she can, she has confirmed the numbers that she's requesting today. As I, as, as we know, that the properties have already merged on title. So it is now one lot. There are two buildings on the lot. And this would be an infill construction that would be connecting the two buildings.
Is there is a parking study report available for this numbers?
Alexis?
We have not got a, a traffic consultant involved.
So do you, so you had a traffic consultant involved, but was there a parking study submitted with this application?
We have not, we have not been requested to, and we didn't see it as needed, so we don't have that.
Okay, thank you. It's an industrial building. What's the, what's the business here? Alexis, what is the business of this building, in this building? We lost her again.
Madam Chair, can I elaborate on this, then the type of businesses there?
Yes.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so actually, there are a series of small units there in these two plazas. There are more than, there are a number of units there, you know, the small units. So I have been there in the area and just like a day or two days before. And I found that the, even this time of the COVID nineteen, when most of the units were closed, even then, the parking was full.
What's the business there? Like, are there?
It's, there are different, different types of offices, industrial units, small outlet offices.
Okay.
It's a variety of things. Now, there are a number of units, what I understand. And this variance is when you are deficient about sixty-nine parking spot and there is no parking study has been conducted. I will be feeling more comfortable if there is a, a ground and solid justifications for that, especially when you have the consultants already hired. If you can go ahead for a parking study.
Okay. Alexis, are you back with us?
Yes, I think, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we are, it's two units that are currently there. And it is for furniture distribution. I don't know if that helps at all. I, I had a little bit of a hard time hearing everything.
That's okay. While you were trying to connect, one of our members was, was explaining the configuration of units in that building. But regardless, so you're saying it's a furniture warehouse distribution type of building unit?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Member M, you had some questions?
Yes, I just wanted to ensure I was interpreting the site plan correctly. So we have two existing buildings that were merged as one property. And you're proposing a one-story addition to connect these two buildings? And that will see the removal of how many parking spots?
When you're, so you're asking what we're proposing, how many to remove?
Well, I'm just wanting to ensure that I'm interpreting your site plan properly. So I see within where you have the building addition, there is a series of parking spots existing. Is that correct?
Yes.
So you're basically gonna replace parking with new GFA?
Correct.
So are you aware of how many parking spots that are being removed?
Again, I don't have that exact number. We could get that information if required.
Because it does look to be substantial.
Okay.
I just want to confirm, Alexis, I, I do recognize you meet the citywide zoning bylaw requirement. But however, that, that parking provision is still under appeal. So unfortunately, you are still subject to the former, the former city bylaw. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm kind of sympathetic to Mr. Said's comments, that I think that it needs to be addressed to see that, you know, you can, you can meet the needs of parking, given the, the new uses or the existing uses that are being proposed. Would you be willing to, to defer your application to undertake a parking study?
I mean, we would definitely be considering. I do have my architect, I think, had some. Be jumping in through an email saying that it was sixty-three spaces where the addition to be connecting was.
Basically, you're saying that.
Member, Member M, if I can just, if I can just interject, sorry, Member M, because it's in the interest of time, Alexis, as well. So this application was circulated to transportation and we did not have any concerns received from transportation. In the event that we defer this application, if the committee chooses to defer this application to be able to provide, to be able to have Alexis submit a parking study, there will be no one reviewing this application because it will not be circulated to transportation services for, there will be no review done at staff level for that. So just want to be cautious of, of who are we, who is going to be the expert who will be reviewing this application?
Why would that be, Madam Chair? Why, why would there not be review if materials are circular, are submitted?
If I can have staff address that.
Through the chair. Transportation has not commented on this application. And if they haven't commented, they have no concerns. So we, and they are, I guess, in the city, they are the, the, they are the in-house experts who would review these applica, review these studies. And if they haven't requested it or require it, then we have no expertise in, in the city to review it.
Had it been a construction raised by transportation, then yes, we would have asked for a, a study and that would have been reviewed by the appropriate staff. But in the absence of that comment, and it's not a concern, I find it a little difficult to be able to enforce that.
Well, unfortunately, I, I just feel differently because, you know, this variance is because of the removal. So sixty-three spots is basically the exact same number that we, like, almost the same number that they're deficient by. So, you know, it kind of is directly related. And this is not like a transit-supported area where we're gonna see other modes of transportation coming here. Like, if you're gonna go to this site, you're gonna be using a car. So I just, I don't really fully understand why transportation didn't provide any comments. It's just, it's just my opinion, but I mean, if everybody else is fine with it.
No, 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 no. You, you, I think you're totally entitled to your opinion and you make up for a comment. And that's why I asked, what was the nature of the, the use in this building? If it's, are, are there going to be a lot of visitors coming to this facility? Are there going to be a lot of people employed in this facility? Is this, from what I see, the layout of this building, it's predominantly a warehouse-type building. So maybe, maybe Alexis can express, explain a bit of that? Like, how many visitors are we expecting here? How many employees are there?
Hi, yes, so we have, sorry, just trying to pull up. They do not, the owner confirms that they do not have many visitors to this site at all. Because they are just mainly manufacturing and distribution. It is a warehouse.
And even the addition, it is a warehouse.
And the number of employees? Alexis? Alexis, can you comment on the number of employees?
Okay, so there's some interruption and some chopping here. She's talking to someone? Okay, maybe we'll give a minute. Maybe she's talking to someone in the background?
Hello?
Yes, Alexis.
Hi, Alexis.
Hi, I'm so sorry, I apologize. About approximately fifty.
Okay, so then I, I'm a little bit more relieved to hear that it's not closer to that hundred and fifty spaces. So, okay, thank you for that piece of mine.
Sorry for the connection. I apologize.
Okay, no problem. So we, we got the numbers. So there's fifty employees in the building and there will, there are no visitors coming to the building. It's an office building, predominantly warehouse-type of facility. Having said that, are there any further questions for Alexis at this time? Or if not, then can I please have a motion? And there's an urban forestry condition?
Yes, I am aware of that.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, may I please have a motion? I need a motion.
Madam Chair, before moving the motion, I will still go back to Member Amy's comments on that when she was referring that even if the committee members want something to be examined by the, by the concern department, although they, they haven't noticed any concern before that, once the thing is coming to the surface in the committee, we can still refer it back to the experts, in-house experts. And they can give us their opinion of whether a study, a parking study is good or we are required on that.
But if they haven't asked for a parking study, what are they gonna?
They haven't asked it. I do agree. Maybe there, there may be some good reasons for that. Maybe we are not aware of that either. They have to tell us, okay, these are the grounds over which we don't need the parking study. But at that point, since the transportation in-house export haven't given us any comments on that. So we are asking them to favor the committee with their comments and expert opinion. I think that could be one of the way.
Okay, so, but I, but I, but in terms of, but if, if they look, if they review a study and if they find. If they do not have a concern to begin with, they will probably have no concern with the parking study. And the parking study will most likely justify the reduction in number.
So Madam Chair, could we insert a condition and essentially say the committee is asking for a parking study to be submitted to the transportation division for review and comment? And then we would go from there.
If that's how the committee wishes to, sure. I need a motion.
To staff, what do you think? To staff, uh, what do you think, a conditional on those lines? In other words, we say a parking study is required to be submitted and reviewed by transportation staff. You think that would, yeah?
That's, if you, if you, if that's what the committee requests, then we, we can, we can add that, that, that condition can be added. I would just be very careful in terms of when, um, asking, asking transportation services to clear that condition. Just you're gonna have to, it's, it's gonna have to be worded that it be submitted and request that it be reviewed.
As a condition of approval?
Yeah.
Yes. And that is what my concern is, that if a department has not requested for a study, if the experts have confirmed that the parking reduction is, is acceptable, I don't see why we can, why condition to that effect would make or change anything different. Like, it would not change. A, a parking study would typically justify the reduction. And if they're already convinced that the reduction is acceptable, I don't see this additional layer helping us out. But if the committee strongly feels about it, um, I need a motion to that effect.
I'll put forward a motion, Madam Chair, for approval. Subject to the conditions that are, wha, what, was it urban forestry conditions?
Just, just urban forestry.
Yeah, urban forestry conditions.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, on the floor to, to approve the application, uh, subject to conditions of urban forestry. May I have a second or please? My second call, may I have a second or please? Alright, the motion fails. May I have a new motion, please?
Madam Chair, I will move the motion that, uh, we may ask the applicant to conduct a parking study report and we will be asking the in-house expert of the city, uh, to double-check on that report and get back to the committee before we make a final decision.
So basically, you're deferring the application, subject to provision of a parking study?
Parking study and comments received from the, uh, in-house experts.
Okay, may I have a second or please?
Second that.
Okay, member McKay seconds the motion. Um, all in favor of this motion? All opposed. For record, I oppose it too, uh, but I know it doesn't really matter. I know, I, I can't, I, I can't, I know, it's gonna create a tie. Uh, the motion, uh, carries and the application is deferred, uh, subject to provision of a parking study. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi Alexis, did you catch that?
I, I did, um, I, I was muted. I'm, I, I don't know if this is a credible call, but if the motion has been already moved, I was trying to-
It, it has, it has been moved and the decision has been made. Your application has been deferred.
Okay, I was, I was placed on mute, so we were, I was trying to give more information, but, um-
We were in committee Alexis anyway, so you wouldn't have had a chance to speak. But, uh, the committee was quite, uh, concerned about the reduction and hence the decision has been made. Your application has been deferred, subject to provision of a parking study. And that would be reviewed by, um, city staff in the relevant department. Thank you. Alright, so we will now move to item number seventeen in the interest of time. We realize we have some time, um, um, issues here. Uh, item number seventeen is two ninety-nine West Point Avenue. We have the application before us, uh, to construct an extension of the rear balcony and duck. And we have one variance, uh, requested in front of us. We have, um, in terms of registered, um, um, deputants, we have the agent Joe, Joe Domb and the owner Avi Karunakar. Um, Joe and Avi, are you online with us?
Yes, this is Joe speaking.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Is Avi online with us?
Yes, I, yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, Avi, thank you, Joe. Uh, members of the committee, um, are there any questions for, uh, Joe or Avi at this time? I see none. Um, we have two letters of support and TRC has no objection and I do not see any conditions from any department. If there are no questions for the agent or the owner, may I please have a motion?
Put forward a motion, um, for approval.
Okay, so we have a motion by member M, uh, for a motion to approve the application.
And second by Gary McKay.
Member McKay seconds the motion, all in favor of this motion. The motion's carried. Uh, Joe and Avi, your application has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now move to item number eighteen. Item number eighteen is for two seven one one Markham Road. Uh, the application is to construct a new one-story masonry industrial building. And we have before us three variances to the zoning bylaw and they're all to the new zoning bylaw. We have, um, in terms of registered participants, we have Terry Fong as the agent. Terry, are you online with us?
Yes.
Thank you, Terry.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and panel members.
Thanks, Terry. Members of the committee. Are you talking? Are you saying something, Terry?
Oh, I just wanted to make sure you hear me.
Yes, we can hear you well, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so for item number eighteen, um, we do not have, we have a staff report from community planning. Um, it's just a background information report. Uh, there are no recommendations, there are no issues, um, as per staff. And, um, these are changes to the previously approved site plan application. And there are some changes to the building elevations that would be addressed through the building permit issuance stage. Uh, members of the committee, would you like to have a presentation from the applicant? Or are there any questions for, for Terry? No question? Amy, any questions? No. So there are no questions for Terry at this time. Uh, members of the committee, any, uh, if there are no questions, may I please have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move approval of this application.
Okay, and there are no conditions?
There are no forestry conditions.
Okay, so member McKay puts forward a motion to approve the application. Member M seconds the motion and all in favor of this motion. Motion's carried. Your application has been approved, Terry, and there are no conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And last but not the least, we have item nineteen, um, on eight zero one Milner Avenue. Um, the application has come back to us. Uh, the application's to construct a new five-story self-storage facility. The applicant's coming back to the committee to permit the parking variance and there was some misunderstanding at a previous hearing whereby the variances were withdrawn at the time. But then, um, it was realized that the variances are still required. So the application before us is a, is similar to what we heard in March. We have with us, uh, Joseph Seimer, the applicant or the agent. So Joseph, are you online with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we do hear you, thank you very much. And we have Stephanie Cyrus as an interested party. Stephanie, are you here? Do we know what the interest was at the time? No? Okay. No, that's okay. So we have Joseph with us as the agent on this application. Members of the committee, would you like to have a presentation or do you have any questions for Joseph? Okay, so Joseph, member Said would like to have a very brief presentation. Uh, could you please provide, um, your presentation as it relates to the requested variance?
Certainly, I'll be as brief as I can. I know this has been a long one, you guys have been doing a great job. Um, I wanted to just tell you that the variance is specific to the use. It's the industrial use that didn't get, um, the variance in two thousand and five. And I think that was the confusion at the last meeting that you guys had. So because we have industrial use within the commercial lands, that, uh, use did not get varied. And so we are asking for the variance to apply now because of that specific use.
Okay, thank you. Member Said, do you have a question?
Thank you, Joseph. Um, well, my question was more about the, um, the parking spots there. Um, the reduction in the surface parking spot because of the storage, right? Uh, and there is a parking study and, uh, there are justifications for the, for the removal of those hundred and twenty-two parking spots and, uh, studies there. Uh, I would just like, um, I wanted to have your, um, briefing or, uh, like, just a presentation on that. What are the main justifications for this number of parkings?
Certainly, I can do that. Um, the self-storage building is actually along Milner. Uh, you'll see it at the, uh, uh, top right to your screen. Um, so that area of our site is very much underutilized. So essentially where that entire building is going to be, that parking area was provided, uh, when the Walmart expansion happened to satisfy the parking ratios that, uh, were required for the shopping center. Um, but very much today, and the parking study speaks to that, that area of the, of the shopping center does not get used at all. There's very little parking that happens. In fact, people park there to, uh, to use other, other neighbors. Um, so that's, uh, that's what we're asking for is the, is that this justification for parking on the site, uh, on that particular area is not required. We are finding that, uh, parking is underutilized in the site overall, um, because of various factors, certainly COVID is a factor today. Uh, the, uh, the cinema is underutilized and, uh, and so there's various times of the day where parking is, uh, is, is, um, used infrequently. So the parking that is on-site is sufficient and that is underutilized. Parking that we're taking advantage of to build a self-storage building. Uh, and the self-storage use itself is, um, a very low-impact use. Very few cars use those types of buildings. And, uh, our parking study justifies the parking reduction for that specific use.
Thank you, Joseph. Um, yeah, coming to this point, the justifications there. I, I have gone through the, uh, parking study report thoroughly. Uh, let me, let me mention two or three points which are quite interesting for me. Uh, first of all, um, the, the parking lot E, the utilization rate of parking lot E was surprisingly too low over the past many years, right? It's zero percent. And just last year it is two percent. I was surprised. Uh, how come a parking lot which is constructed many years before has been empty in that busy, uh, where there is Walmart and Cineplex and pizza shops? And there are so many other important, uh, important franchises are there. So my first concern, or could you elaborate on that? I mean, I cannot think about that. The parking lot was there for many years. It has been zero percent utilization. The second thing is, if I, if I make a comparison between all these five lots, A, B, C, D, E, uh, if you look at them, the three parking lots, the utilization rate has been over fifty percent. From fifty percent to actually sixty-three percent, which is the peak, uh, utilization of that. Uh, so these parking areas are quite adjacent to each other. So parking lot A is busy sixty-seven, sixty-three percent. And parking lot E, where there is a justification of building a storage, is just busy two percent. Uh, again, the timing of the parking study, the parking study has been conducted on three consecutive days. Right? Uh, around this time of the year, it's, uh, end of May and June first and June second. Uh, I, I believe that whenever a study is made, there is always a time gap between that. Maybe a seasonal time or maybe busy time or later time. But this was a surprising, like, the, the survey has been conducted in three consecutive days, uh, which is a very short time span. The utilization rate on, on which the numerical data has been based has been taken from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, uh, which I see, the logic is there, point zero nine, uh, per hundred parking spaces. And if you calculate the GFA, it fits into the eleven parking areas, which is good. But realistically, if you make a comparison of the timing, the perceived utilizations, I think the numbers are not supporting your justification.
Thank you, member Said. Um, Joseph, would you like to address that?
Uh, certainly, um, we're relying on our professionals here. So we've got Lee Consulting that has done, um, not only studies for this site, but they've worked on other sites that I'm aware of. So their understanding of the use and the parking is, um, I think I would rely on them. And I don't have them here today to discuss it, so I would have to rely on their study. I am, I did commission this study to be done at a busy time of the year. And I made sure that it was over three consecutive days when we are in the, the busy time of our season. It's not, uh, midsummer where people are on vacations, school is certainly in. And, uh, so, um, the parking numbers that you're seeing, I believe, are justified and correct. Um, you'll also find that the way our site centers are moving today, we've got a real estate agent on this site. We've got a bank on the site. So these are, these are uses that are not typical of a busy retail shopping center. And we're getting more and more vacancies. So I would say that the fifty to sixty-three percent, um, were, um, probably there in reality today. And we're going to, I expect, we would be, um, declining in numbers as we move, move into the future. So I would think that we're not going to have a parking study or parking problem on the site in the future when this new building is, is put up.
Uh, Joseph, I'm sorry to say I don't agree with you that in future the, uh, the parking utilization will be further reducing. Uh, again, I will agree with you if this parking study have given me any trend on that. That's what I was saying, that the parking study is just focusing on three consecutive days surveys. Uh, it, it, it has, it hasn't given any, any utilization over the past three years, right? Or it could have given a projection for the next one year or two years. Because, you know, this is a five-story storage building, uh, project worth millions of dollar. And it's going to be there for the next twenty years or fifty years. Uh, so I don't want to see, like, already Scarborough Toronto is congested as far as the parking is concerned. Uh, uh, but I cannot say that the parking utilization will be decreasing in future. Uh, unless you give me a trend on that, uh, surprisingly, this study doesn't give me any trends on that. Uh, it's just focused on that three days, right?
Okay, so, sorry, member Said, in, in the fullness of time, because we have some limitation here. Um, this study was circulated to the, uh, to engineering services. Transportation planners have looked into it. They had no comments on it. So, uh, a report that is prepared by, uh, by an expert, has been reviewed by an expert. And, and I, we didn't see any comments come back from the transportation department as well. So I just wanted to, uh, make a note of that. Um, Joseph, uh, I understand you're not a transportation planner and I guess you can sort of validate or, or say anything, um, with respect to the numbers or to the content of the report. We have to rely, as planners, on the conclusion, uh, from the experts at this time. Um, is there anything else that you would like to add? Oh, member M has a question, member.
I've been, I've been waving for like ten minutes here.
You, you, if, if I don't, if, if I don't catch your attention, uh, feel free to jump in, okay?
Okay, so, um, respectfully, member Said, like, uh, Madam Chair has stated, we've had two rounds of experts look at this study, both the City of Toronto Engineering Department as well as Lee Consulting. And I, I would like to state that, even though it shows two percent utilization where the self-storage facility were to be, even if the survey showed that it was similar to all of the other lots at fifty-three percent, that is still less than half of the capacity. So there should still be substantive amounts of parking available even if the survey did render results similar to the other, other lots. So I really think it would be unduly punitive for us not to take the advice of engineering staff on, on this matter. I think that they've very much proved that this site has enough parking capacity on this particular portion where the self-storage facility is, but also on the balance of, of the site. I mean, fifty-three, sixty-three percent utilization is still nowhere near a hundred percent utilization. And I know for a fact that COVID is drastically, like, reducing the amount of automotive, um, pressures on parking. People are getting their, their- People are getting their, their parcels delivered. I know Walmart is giving, giving, uh, Amazon a real run for their money, and I really do see the trend going down in the future. So I, I would feel that this is a minor variance, and that we should take the advice of the transportation engineers, both sides of the coin, both city staff, along with Leah Consulting, and that's, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Member M. Any further comments or questions for Joseph?
Well, actually, I, I just say, and very briefly, here we do have, uh, a transportation study and, um, parking study, and our Transportation Division has not commented, so it, it, you know, it, it must be acceptable.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Member Gary. In the interest of time, if there are no comments or questions, uh, for Joseph at this time, may I please have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Okay.
If I may?
Yeah, sure, Joseph.
Just, I wanted to know if I might be able to add particular language into your decision, where we are asking for eleven parking spaces, I would want to know if you would be able to add, "one of which shall be an accessible parking space." And I bring that up only because in another jurisdiction in Toronto, the interpretation by the Building Department was based on the, uh, required parking, so that would be before decision, and, uh, so I wanted to make sure that the Building Department was satisfied that one of those parking spaces is going to be accessible.
One of which, the required?
The eleven parking spaces for the self-storage use in sp- in particular.
I don't think we have a variance before us for that.
We don't, yeah. And, and I don't want to screw up the numbers in case there's more requirements from an accessibility perspective, I don't have that information before me, so I would be a little hesitant, Joseph.
Yeah, I think we should just focus on the variances that we have before us, which I, I think, I, I was put, I was gonna put forward a motion for approval before, before you had...
Okay, yeah. So, so Joseph, um, I, I hope you understand, uh, because we do not have complete information, I would be a little, um, reluctant in, in putting in something that may, um, jeopardize your case, actually.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll let, we'll, we'll let the Building Department look at the required number of parking spaces. Okay, uh, Member M, you would like to proceed with the motion?
Yes, I would like to proceed with a motion of approval.
Please go ahead, okay. So we have a motion on the floor by Member M recommending approval of this application, and I don't believe there are any conditions. May I have a second or please?
Madam Chair, I second that approval.
Right, all in favor of this motion? All opposed? Okay, so we have Member M and Member Gary in support of this motion, and Member Said opposes this motion. Motion is carried, your application has been approved, Joseph. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to the end of the agenda. Um, is there anything else on the agenda that we need to talk about? Are there any, is there any other business, nothing? Okay, all right, if there is nothing else, may I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Terminate the meeting.
Well, Madam Chair, be pleased to bring that motion forward, that we now adjourn.
We terminate the meeting, okay, have a second or? Okay, we have a second or, all in favor of this motion? Motion's carried, app, the meeting is terminated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member M. Thank you for joining remotely.
Thank you. Have a good day, everybody.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Amy. Not too bad.